The time is 9:30. So I'd like to call to order the April 6, 2021 Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners meeting will start with the agenda item 1A roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Marino.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Here.
Commissioner Sax.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Present.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. We do have six county commissioners present in the chamber. We also have by telephone, I heard her check in, Commissioner Maria Marino who at some point I'll ask a member of this body to make a motion consistent with the rules of the board to allow her to participate and vote due to extended state of emergency that is COVID-19 related and that will allow her the ability to participate on that emergency basis. Before we do that, we'll move to agenda item 1B invocation and then 1C pledge of allegiance, which both will be led by Commissioner Mac Bernard along with a moment of silence. Commissioner Bernard, please rise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the commission and the public, it is with deep sadness that I announce the passing of Congressman Alcee Hastings. Congressman Hastings was a dedicated public servant and leader. We are very thankful for his service and contributions to Palm Beach County and all of the residents of Palm Beach County and the 20th Congressional District. Please rise with me with a moment of silence for Congressman Alcee Hastings.
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and its deferment.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, for those very kind, very accurate words about an incredible public servant that will be missed deeply, both in this state and nationally. He was a trailblazer and a very strong leader and a humble man and a member of Congress and human being that we will miss dearly. We'll move now to agenda item 2A additions, deletions, and substitutions. I'd like to recognize the county administrator.
Mr. Mayor, can we make the motion to allow Commissioner Marino to join?
I was going to do it between 2A and 2B just so that she's aware of any additions and deletions and we'll swear or get her motioned in.
Mayor, members of the board, on page 15, 3F4 is being deleted for further staff review. Page 32, 5B1 is a revised summary. We added a line in that the Ds will not be recorded until all county due diligence has been completed, just to be totally transparent on those particular transfer of land.
Very good. If I understand correctly, on page 15.
3F4.
3F4 is deleted.
For further staff review.
Page 32, 5B1 revised summary.
Correct.
That concludes any additions, deletions, and substitutions.
That is correct.
Is there a motion with regard to the board rules relating to voting during a time of an emergency?
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Bernard, related to Commissioner Marino's participation by phone or other technology related to an ongoing emergency. There's no other comments from members of the board, all in favor, all opposed. That passes 6-0. So now we'll move to agenda item 2B, an adoption of the agenda as amended.
Moved agenda as amended.
Vice Mayor Weinroth has moved the adoption of the amended agendas. They're seconded, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. There's no further comment by a member of the board, all in favor, all opposed. The agenda is adopted, 7 to 0. We're going to move now to agenda item 3 consent agenda, which begins on page 6. If there is any public comment, those cards should have been previously submitted.
I have one.
Very good. I'll recognize Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have one public comment on item 3EE1, and that's Ms. Linda Harvey. You have three minutes. Lindy Harvey.
3EE1, which is found on page 29, sorry, page 29. Ma'am, you're recognized for three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Lindy Harvey. I am the Executive Director of the Spirit of Giving, and the Spirit of Giving, along with our collaborative of the county, the Office of Community Revitalization, PBSO, and Children's Service Council are running the back-to-school event, the PBC. And this item, the consent agenda, is asking for a little bit more money towards our events because we know from last year and COVID and still COVID-related that there is going to be so much more need this year. And this additional funding will help us cover at least 1,100 more students, which is so critical this year because of COVID and the need. And I just would like to thank you for your support, and we appreciate so much what you do for the children in our community.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Weinroth, you're recognized, sir.
Ms. Harvey, it's always great to see you up here. Can you tell us when that event is going to be held?
Saturday, July 24.
Very good. Thank you, and again, thank you for everything you do for our schoolchildren, getting them ready for the next school year.
Thank you.
Very good. That concludes public comment on the consent agenda. Are there any motions?
Moved to approve.
Vice Mayor Weinroth has moved the passage of the consent agenda as published, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. There's no comments by a member of the board, all in favor, all opposed. Consent agenda passes 7 to 0. We're going to move now to agenda item 4, very special presentations. We'll start with 4A, a proclamation declaring April 2021 as National County Government Month in Palm Beach County, led by Commissioner Melissa McKenzie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a member of the Board of Directors of the National Association of Counties and part of their leadership team, it's my honor today to declare April 2021 as National County Government Month. We're doing this proclamation because NACO has asked that we do this publicly, and I know for the last few months we've been doing them off-site, but I'm going to go ahead and read this into the record. Whereas the nation's 3,069 county governments serve more than 300 million Americans and provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. Counties provide public health, justice, safety, infrastructure, transportation, technology, environmental stewardship, and economic services that play key roles in everything from residents' daily commutes to emergency response. Palm Beach County and all counties take pride in the responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. Whereas under the leadership of the National Association of Counties President Gary Moore, NACO is demonstrating how counties matter, especially in supporting residents and businesses during the coronavirus pandemic. Whereas every year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. Whereas Palm Beach County takes pride in its mission to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of its residents, it is also looking to continually focus on delivering quality programs and services. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled today that April 2021 in our county is hereby proclaimed National County Government Month. Mr. Mayor, I don't think this could come at a better time as we're about to receive a mid-session update from our Legislative Affairs Team highlighting some of the efforts that the Florida Legislature is trying to undertake to surpass our power here at the local level. And this proclamation reflects the number of services and the boots on the ground that local governments have in the state of Florida, being the first ones to respond in cases of emergency and being those ones that really have the most impact on our residents on a day-to-day basis. So I would like to ask that we stand and we take a photo so that NACO can tweet this out for us.
That would be wonderful. And again, it couldn't be more appropriate for Commissioner McKenzie to be the one to move this proclamation forward as the President of the Florida Association of Counties, and I think we would all be delighted to participate in a photo to recognize this. So we'll take a quick, very short break for this picture, and then we'll return directly to business.
What are we doing?
Up here, Melissa.
You have a sun spot.
It says right there, right. Right there.
The boss.
Put the short people down in front.
Dave, why don't you get over here?
I want to be taller.
Do you want to be taller?
Our ass quenches.
I know.
Get those crow's feet.
Yeah.
Don't smile.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Bob, is that your phone?
Yeah.
Click one.
Who's got that line off?
Oh, yeah.
Take a picture.
All right. We're going to move now back to agenda item 4, which is found on page 31, to 4B COVID-19 update. So I'll ask the county emergency manager, Mary Blakeney, and Dr. Alonso from the Florida Department of Health and Director of Palm Beach County's unit. Thank you for being here today. The board is delighted to have you update us and the community on the status of COVID-19 in Palm Beach County. You're recognized.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, pleasure to be here with you. County Administrator, pleasure as always. So we're going to update a bit on the numbers, take a look at some of the concerns, and then let you ask me questions. So we're going to start, as I usually do, with our first slide showing our numbers since our last commission meeting. You can see that the numbers have gone up a little bit since our last meeting. We have 843 new cases for a total of over 30 million cases in the U.S., 555,015 deaths. That number has been less than the previous number in terms of increases, and that's consistent with the numbers that we're seeing across the country. Cases have been increasing, but deaths are somewhat decreasing. Our next graph is the one that we've been keeping a very close eye on. If you remember, at one of the early meetings, I was concerned about these two little spikes that occurred right here that was not consistent with this coming down. And indeed, we now have an increase that could become that fourth wave that they're so concerned about. I am staying optimistic about this whole situation for multiple reasons that I will talk about as I go through, but mainly the fact that our vaccines are being rapidly deployed and our increase has been significant, especially in these last few weeks. Nationally, we are hitting the targets that we want to hit in terms of the vaccine. People are responding to the vaccine. We've had an excellent response rate here in Palm Beach County. Together with the healthcare district, we're seeing that that 18- to 44-year-old group, that's the one that is causing these cases to go up, are asking for appointments. That is very, very encouraging. And so with that, I'll continue going through. So we are concerned about this. I will also talk about the variants and our breakthrough rate and so forth, but I want everyone to, that this is the reason that there's so much concern about the fourth wave. So our numbers, just to, I'll let Mary go through those more exact in terms of our graphs and so forth, but as you can see, what I'm talking about here is that our total positivity has remained high. It's still increasing. Our daily positivity has gone up a bit. We're now at 6. We had been in the 5s for quite some time. We actually reached 7 on Sunday, 7.7. Our number of tests have been fluctuating up and down. We've gone as high as 8,000 and then as low as 3,000, so they're fluctuating. There's still plenty of testing sites throughout Palm Beach County and lots of places where people can get tested. The ballpark continues to do testing, rapid testing. You get your results right away, and they have plenty of volume. There are no long lines anymore. And then this one, our number of cases per day has gone up just a little bit. Our average for 14 days is now 369, just up a little bit, but we're staying below that 1,000, so our contact tracers are happy about that. The hospitals and the ventilator use and everything is quite appropriate, and Mary will give you more details on that. So we're not worried about the hospital surge. That's another reason that I'm staying optimistic, that although we are seeing these cases, because we have vaccinated such a large percentage of our seniors, that we're not seeing the deaths. Because if you remember, the majority of the deaths were in the 65 and over. So the fact that we have blanketed the senior population, those people are now safe and will not end up in the hospital, will not end up dying. Just very briefly, we're now at the 16 or 18 years of age in order to get vaccine. Depends on whether you have the Pfizer allows for 16-year-olds, 18 is for the rest of the In terms of our phase of where we're at, I put us in phase 2 here, kind of in the middle, but we're almost getting very close to that phase 3. I think in the next three to four weeks, we're going to see even more vaccine coming onboard. At that point, we're actually talking about having now the physicians getting the vaccine. They've been able to now order on Florida shots. That means the doctors will be getting vaccines. Some of them, believe it or not, have turned the vaccine back. I'm not sure why that's happening, but some of them don't want to store it and so forth. That happens in some doctor's offices that they decide to let their patients go to the health department to get vaccinated. But they do are able now to get the vaccine. More and more of that vaccine is going to flow out to them. I recommend that people accept whatever vaccine is available. If they turn vaccine back because everybody wants the Johnson &amp; Johnson, that doesn't make sense because not everybody's going to be able to get Johnson &amp; Johnson. So I highly recommend that whatever vaccine is available, that's the one that we go ahead and get vaccinated with. Going forward, this is the, our five metro counties where we continue to see Palm Beach County leading in terms of the 65 and over, where it's 76% for persons that we vaccinated over the age of 65, ahead of Broward and all the other counties. In the 60 to 64, we're at 52%, just slightly averaging the same with the exception of Broward, that's a 56%. For the 55 to 59, we're at 37%, and you can see the difference here. And then in the 50 and above, which we just started, we went from 18% just a couple weeks ago, we've gone all the way up to 32%, not too far away from the rest of the group. So I think very quickly with the vaccine we're getting now, we're going to catch up, especially with the appointments that I saw. And the vaccine that we have gotten for the healthcare district, they're going to be able to do massive numbers of vaccines and appointments right now. We were able to take the vaccine that was left over from some of the strike teams that had come and given that Pfizer over to the healthcare district. The healthcare district has also gotten, as well as the other FQHCs have gotten their supplies from the feds. That's a tremendous amount of vaccine also coming into the county, as well as multiple strike teams that are coming through, and I think Mary will highlight some of that also. So we've got a lot of vaccine right now. We need to take advantage of that and get everybody vaccinated. I want to congratulate the public. They're keeping up with where the sites are, and they're coming, and the vaccine is being moved into arms. The variant, a lot of people asking questions about the variant. So the variant have continued to increase quite a bit. This is the map from the last time I showed you where Florida was at 1,070. We're up to 3,568 since our last visit here at the Board of County Commissioners. You can see also that California has increased to 865. Colorado is beating California at 917. And Michigan, which was the only other blue color, is now at 1,242. So what do we look like here in Florida, in our three counties? Broward continues to lead by quite a bit, but now we have all five of the variants that are being tracked. That includes the South Africa variant, which is very small. This is red here. Dade and Broward does not have it. We do. Then we have the Brazil and the Japan. Those two have been put into one. That's the P1. That is this number here. And then we have the UK, which is the largest one. That is the one that's spreading the fastest and the most numbers in all states. And you can see the difference, 824 versus 287 and 429 for Dade. And then we have two that are the U.S. These are both California variants that have been mutated here in the United States, and those are these other numbers here that you see. So overall, the big one that could become the predominant virus would be the UK virus, and that's concerning, not because it's more lethal, but because it's more contagious. So in order to stop that, the main tool that we have is the vaccine. We have got to get everybody vaccinated so this virus cannot spread and become the dominant virus. And that's worldwide. That's not just here. So for that reason, we need to continue wearing our mask, washing our hands, and watching our distance. I'll take questions. Thank you very much for allowing me to give the presentation.
Very good. We'll transition now to our emergency manager and then take questions at the end of that presentation.
Perfect.
Blake, you're recognized, ma'am.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. Today is the 386th day of the EOC activation for COVID-19. I'm presenting you the COVID-19 phased restart program, or the CPR program, which each of you have been provided. Remember, these are designed to demonstrate resurgence. The red-colored indicators means the benchmark was not met, and the green color indicator means the benchmark was met. As you will see, this week, we did not meet five of those indicators. I'm going to start off with the total positivity rate. As Dr. Alonso shared in her report, the overall positivity rate continues to increase. We're currently at 16.22%. The red line in the lower-left-hand graph indicates the seven-day running average, representing an overall increasing trend. The upper-right graph shows the overall positivity rate has been steadily increasing since its low of 12.14% back on October 25 of 2020. Next, you will see our daily lab positivity. Over the last two weeks, we've seen an increase in our daily lab positivity rates. The lower-left-hand graph shows our daily lab positivity rate is an average of 6.13%, which is above our target of 5%. The red line on the graph indicates the seven-day running average. But yet, with the higher positivity rates, our hospital census remains strong. As the chart on the lower-left shows, over the last two weeks, we saw fewer patients hospitalized with COVID-19. We are seeing approximately 4% of our hospital beds countywide being used for COVID-19 patients. The chart on the upper-right shows the historical hospital trend of COVID hospitalizations in Palm Beach County. As it relates to COVID-19 deaths, the graph in the upper-right corner shows that our COVID-19-related deaths continue to slowly decline. You have seen our death rate, we have seen our death rate, that is the number of deaths divided by the number of COVID-19 cases, decrease slowly since mid-July. Our death rate currently stands at 2% of overall COVID-19 positive individuals. The seven-day average of daily deaths is an average of 1.43 deaths a day. When it comes to our ICU cases, over the last month, we saw fewer COVID-19 patients in our intensive care units countywide. The upper-right graph shows the overall COVID ICU cases since May of 2020. Currently, less than 11% of all ICU beds countywide are occupied by COVID patients. That's about 42 patients a day countywide. The countywide ventilator usage remains stable, and we continue to have bi-weekly calls with the hospitals. As far as our daily med alerts by our fire rescue agency, this is a representative countywide sample of people with COVID-like symptoms that have called 911 and were listed as med alerts. We can see by the chart in the lower-left corner that med alerts have, on an average, decreased. This past week, we averaged five patients a day. But we have seen that weekly counts of the emergency departments presenting COVID-like illnesses has fluctuated over the last three weeks. This week, our COVID-like illnesses increased slightly, representing in our emergency departments. As Dr. Alonso shared, our testing remains strong. We continue to have almost 120 testing sites within the county, and Palm Beach County Fire Rescue still does homebound testing. But we all know the future is in our COVID-19 vaccination. We continue to have daily, multi-agency leadership calls. Through these calls, we monitor and provide logistical support to Dr. Alonso and her team at the Department of Health and the healthcare district team to operate the permanent locations established in the county, at the Mid-County Senior Center, the South County Civic Center, the South Florida Fairgrounds, and the Burns Road Community Center. We continue to have calls with the state EOC three times a week. We communicate with the Florida Division of Emergency Management and the Florida Department of Health to support state teams conducting special missions, such as those initially created to vaccinate the long-term care facilities and nursing homes. Since those initial weeks, we have seen missions supported by the state, which have supported 55 and older communities, faith-based sites, HUD and USDA communities, school staff, homebound missions, feeding sites, and most recently, pop-up sites in underserved communities, and also sites that have popped up for our farm workers. These special missions have led to additional permanent sites in Pahokee, Riviera Beach, Boynton Beach, and West Palm Beach. We update our municipal partners weekly during weekly calls at the EOC. As Dr. Alonso said in closing, our previous presentation of the CPR metrics showed six red areas. This week, we are at five. The trends we are seeing include our overall positivity rate continues to climb, our seven-day and 14-day positivity rate has slightly increased, and our emergency department visits with COVID-like illnesses have slightly increased. On a positive note, our daily hospitalization rates and ICU rates have decreased, our death rates have decreased, and our med alerts have decreased. We continue to encourage people to get vaccinated, as we have vaccinated over 465,615 people in Palm Beach County. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you so much for such a detailed update with both positive and negative aspects to it, which I'm sure my colleagues want to examine just a little bit further. So we'll start with Vice Mayor Weinroth and then move to Commissioner Sax.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for your report today. I'd like to focus on several of the items from the phased restart CPR program, because I think those are the ones that we really need to be focusing on. And not to say that all of these numbers don't mean something, but I think that we've all accepted the issue that this is not going to go away, that this may be in the background like the flu, even though it's not the flu, but it's maybe in the background for a long time. But that the vaccinations that our residents have been taking are improving their health if they do get infected. So I point to item 2 here, daily hospitalizations, where in March 1, we had 285 average hospitalizations, and today we have 184, fully 100 less than back in March. So even though... but it's maybe in the background for a long time. But that the vaccinations that our residents have been taking are improving their health if they do get infected. So I point to item two here, daily hospitalizations, where in March first, we had two hundred and eighty-five average hospitalizations, and today we have a hundred and eighty-four, fully a hundred less than back in March. So even though you are reporting that we are seeing positivity rates increasing and that we're not happy that the positivity on a daily basis is exceeding five percent, those people who are getting sick are getting sick less, have less complications, are having less need for emergency help. And I think that is where we have all been trying to get. You know, we talked about flattening the curve. That was back a year ago. Today, we're talking about getting people to a point where they are going to be able to resolve their infection and move on. And I think we're seeing that in these statistics. And so I don't want to lose sight of that. I also don't want to lose sight of the fact that the daily death rate dropped from two percent back on March first to one point four-three percent today. Again, any death is too many deaths, but this definitely demonstrates that the vaccinations are taking hold, and people may get infected after they've been vaccinated. We don't know whether that's true or not. I don't think the CDC or the NIH or anybody else out there has definitively said whether you can get infected or not after you've been vaccinated. But if they are getting vaccinated and they do get infected, their chance of surviving and recuperating are much higher than they were back last March. Am I reading these numbers correctly, doctor?
Yes, you're right on, and that's what keeps me optimistic. There is data for what we call breakthrough percentages. Those are people who have had a complete set of vaccinations. That means for Pfizer and Moderna, they've had the two shots. For Johnson &amp; Johnson, the one shot. That breakthrough percentage, the last time that I looked, we had a hundred and thirty-six cases here in Palm Beach County, a hundred and thirty-six people that had breakthrough after they got their completed shots. That is zero point four-eight percent, so less than half a percent. And if you recall, the percentages for the vaccination was five percent. The Moderna and the Pfizer, pretty close to about five percent. So much, much less than the. Now, it's not good to look at just a county, right? When we're looking at breakthrough numbers for a vaccine, we need national and global numbers. But that gives you an indication that we have very few, very, very few, less than half a percent of breakthrough. That is why you still have to be careful in terms of, you know, we're not supermen or superwomen yet with the vaccine, although we feel like it. But we still have to be careful. And of course, the issue is that we do not want to go back up on that curve, right? We want to keep that down. And I think we can because of the vaccination. So you're absolutely right that our focus has to be on vaccinating as many people as we possibly can, so that even though some people are still getting infected, they won't get sick, they won't die.
Right. And again, just repeating on the theme, as we look at the daily death rate, March first, three percent, three point oh-seven percent, now one point four-three, half. The ability of hospitals to safely treat patients was at sixty-eight point one-four percent average patients per day. In March, it's dropped down to forty-one. And daily med alert dropped from nine point eight-six in March down to four point two-nine. Again, this just confirms that we're not over the hump. We still need to, as you said, be cognizant of the fact we have a disease in our neighborhood, in our community, but that what we have done to this point has benefited, and people are alive today because of what we've done. So that brings me to another subject, and I guess it's going to come up anyway. So I'll start the conversation about a little broadcast on Sunday night about something that was going on in this county. CBS aired a show about what Palm Beach County has been doing, and by also talking about what our governor has been doing with respect to the vaccinations of our population. And I, for one, and I'm sure there'll be others up here who will comment on it one way or another, felt it was very one-sided. I felt that it ignored what this body here has been doing through this pandemic. And I'm never going to say that we were perfect. I'm never going to say that this couldn't have been done better. And certainly, as Ms. Blakeney said today, three hundred and eighty-six days of this, we're getting weary of it. But I think the fact is that this county has stepped up with the help of the state and the federal government to attack this disease. And the vaccinations certainly could have been done more efficiently. We're never going to say that this was the best job we could have done. But I think that the decisions that were made, whether it was with Publix to be the distributor to the mass population, or the decisions we made after that point, when we identified the weaknesses with the network of Publix not being available in the western part of the state, and some of our minority communities not getting access to the vaccine as readily as we hoped, that this body made the decision to work to get those vaccines out to the western communities, into the inner cities, into the minority communities. All of that seemed to have been ignored by that article, which seemed to have had one objective, which was to paint the chief executive of this state as being manipulated by a contribution to his campaign, which I think is patently false. Every one of us sitting up here takes contributions. That's a part of being up here. That's how we get elected. We need money to promote ourselves and so that we can get elected. We don't make decisions based upon how much money that is sent to us. It's not a pay-to-play state. I'm getting emails now because of that article complaining that we make decisions based upon pay-to-play. And I think that narrative was patently unfair. I read Mayor Kerner's note, and I think that, I'm not going to say it was intentionally false, but it intentionally left half the story off the table. And I think this county can be proud of the way that it has stood up to this virus. I think that we have been well-served by this governor and by the Director of Emergency Services that have worked with us through this pandemic. And every time we've identified an issue, they've worked with us to deal with it. And I think that even our federal government, anything you want to throw at them as far as the past administration, as far as what they may or may not have done in the rollout of this vaccine. The fact is that a vaccine was out there the moment that it could be approved, that the decision was made to manufacture millions of doses of a vaccine way before it was tested, way before it was approved. And so that gamble paid off. And I think some people forget that. And the fact that we are as far ahead as we are today, three hundred and eighty-six days into this disease, is a matter that we should all be very, very secure in, that people made good decisions. Not every one of them was a perfect decision, but we made good decisions. And I think that the article and the way that CBS dealt with this county was unfair, and I think they owe this county an apology, and I think they owe this state an apology. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'll just briefly respond that, because I don't want to belabor the issue, but our response hasn't been perfect, and it's this board's duty, solemn duty, to correct deficiencies in our response. In that particular instance, Commissioner McKinley certainly brought to our attention and worked very diligently to repair our lack of response out in Glades. And for that, she should be commended and has been. And in each individual district, each commissioner has responded forcefully and valiantly when more help was needed. And that's our job as elected officials. And so I don't go to sleep at night worrying about what the press says. I take a comfort when I go to sleep that each and every one of us do the job that we're sent here to do. So thank you for your comments, sir. We'll go now to Commissioner McKinley and then to Commissioner Weiss.
You had actually called on Commissioner Sacks next?
She turned her light off.
First, I had some questions. Dr. Alonso, can I assume from your presentation that anybody who's got a medical condition that makes them vulnerable no longer needs to go online and fill out that paperwork now that the vaccines have opened up?
Well, since the age has been decreased, most people could still just come through to get vaccinated. So the age, by it decreasing, if you're forty years old and you have diabetes, you can just go get vaccinated.
Right.
If you want to get it as a medical exemption, you still have to fill out the form. But there's no need for that with the age now.
Right.
They can come through the regular.
Okay, thank you. And then just a comment to Mary Blakeney and Todd Bonlaren. When Director Moskowitz reached out to me last week and indicated he was going to move forward with farmworker operations, my A. Joseph and I quickly jumped to duty there and reached out to all of our growers to get an estimated number of farmworkers that would need that vaccine, to get the contact information and to get the exact location of the housing where those farmworkers reside. And you immediately responded and partnered in that effort. And I know it's an ongoing effort. It was so meaningful to be at Bednar Farms Complex on Easter morning, you know, and that vaccine van rolled through and to see those men lined up receiving their vaccines. These are all H2A visa workers that are here in this country to put the food on our table. And I know that you and Todd had so much going on last week, and Dr. Alonso and you and Darcy Davis, too. But to coordinate with Jared's staff up in Tallahassee to try to make that start to happen, and I look forward to other good news and vaccine rollouts happening. Four of our big growers, their farmworkers, will be leaving by the end of this month. And so I know that we're going to step up and make sure that they're vaccinated. Those that want to be vaccinated can get vaccinated before they leave. And so just a really big shout-out. Jared Moskowitz made a promise. He kept that promise, and for that, I am very grateful. In terms, and I didn't want to bring it up, and Ms. Baker told me it was not going to be raised today, but it's been raised, and it's the elephant in the room. There is a reason that no Palm Beach County Commissioner or county official participated in, or was seen on screen during that sixty-minute segment on Sunday. It's because there was no narrative coming from the county that there was any pay-to-play happening. That's not our swim lane. That's not our issue to resolve. There have been calls for a congressional investigation. We'll let Congress handle that. They can come. The judge and jury will be the deciding factor on whether or not that happened. And there was nobody alleging from up here alleging that that was the case. The issue at hand for me and that issue was, was a bad decision made? Yes, it was. Was it quickly resolved? Absolutely. You know, when that announcement came out, and Dr. Alonso, when you sat here on that Tuesday morning, when that article appeared in the Palm Beach Post and said the concern was all of the vaccines were being redirected to Publix and not to the Health Department, that left out a big portion of the county. And we, maybe not so eloquently, but we raised that issue. And by the end of the week, again, Director Moskowitz responded, called me on that Friday, reallocated those vaccines back to you, took five hundred of them, and set up the operation in Pahokee, which we announced the following Wednesday. So it was resolved. And that message was made clear to the reporters from Sixty Minutes. They decided not to use that. I didn't see any part of that interview as a bad reflection on what the county did and how we were responding. They had a different narrative. They chose two other elected leaders to lead that narrative, and we didn't participate in it. And we have done our job, and Director Moskowitz has stepped in and helped us right the wrongs that happened in that, and we're moving on. So, end of story. I will not comment on it any further. I was asked if I was at a meeting. I said, no, I was not at the meeting. That was it. I wasn't at the meeting. That's a fact. So that is the last comment you will ever hear from me regarding this subject matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. And to that point, you weren't at the meeting because of my decision, and we have spoken about that. And it was nothing personal. And there's nothing that's going to shake this board's solidarity in our focus and our mission and what we have to do together as a team elected to represent and help protect one point five million residents. Commissioner Weiss, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions for you this morning. When we get our data, do we include information, what's happening at the VA? Do you guys get that?
No, we don't.
So we don't know what the hospitalizations or ventilator usage or?
No, they keep that separate.
Okay.
The feds.
Do they eventually put that information into the Florida system?
It does not go into the Florida system. They have their own system.
Okay. I recently read an article in the last few days, you know, because obviously everybody's watching across the country and watching the numbers and what's happening. But one of the things, a couple of things that they pointed out was that the increases that we're seeing are tending to be with younger people, and that because of the variants, we're seeing younger people getting sicker and being hospitalized. Can you?
The variant is not more deadly. It just spreads quicker. So where you would have a young person go to the bar and have two or three friends spread the virus to two or three friends, now it's spreading to five, six, ten individuals, as many as thirty, because they spread it to each other. So the problem is the spread, not the severity or the hospitalizations even.
Okay.
The numbers, we do have a report that shows, and I showed it last time. I didn't bring it this time because it's very similar, the number of people hospitalized as a result. And we've only had like seven deaths as a result of the viruses. But it's not any, it doesn't have more of a mortality rate, and it definitely is not more serious. Just spreads quicker. And that is concerning, because if that becomes the predominant virus, then the spread's going to be so much quicker, and then that curve will go up. So that's why the vaccination is the key to stopping the spread.
And then the lag times between new cases, hospitalizations, and deaths, are those continuing at the sort of the same pattern that we've known before? So it's like three to four weeks after we see the increase in the case numbers, that then we see the hospitalizations, and another two to three weeks after that is when you start to see the death count?
Correct. And because of the sixty-five-year-olds that we have vaccinated.
They're not going to be in there.
I hope not to see that same pattern. That's why I'm staying optimistic about this.
Good. That's good. All right. Well, thank you, and thanks for always being here and bringing us up to date.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. We'll move now to Commissioner Bernard and then to Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Alonso, in one of the slides, you had mentioned, you know, like in regards to persons of sixteen or eighteen of age and older are able to get vaccines. Do you foresee kids who are younger in the future being able to be vaccinated, you know, during the next school year?
Absolutely. I don't know if it'll happen this school year, but the studies will continue to use lower and lower ages. It's just a matter. There's no reason why this virus would be any different than any of the other flu. And all the other flu is six months and above, you get vaccinated. But obviously, since the studies haven't been done on that age group, it's not FDA-approved for that, right? But it's just a matter of time. There's no reason that the younger children would not be vaccinated.
Okay. Thank you. And then, you know, the variant, can you kind of like, if you can explain to the public, you know, why we're monitoring the variant and what the potential damage that it can cause, you know, in our county, can you kind of like go into that for us, please?
Sure. Glad to do it. A variant is a very normal phenomenon that occurs with viruses. That's why it's so hard to develop vaccines for viruses. The good thing about the vaccine and the genius of the vaccine is the fact that this vaccine, because you're not giving the virus itself, it's making, it's protecting you by making you make antibodies to the spike, the protein spike on the virus. So even though it mutates, that spike- that spike doesn't change. And therefore, the vaccine is effective against these variants at this point. The concern is that a variant would occur that would not react to the vaccine. So the very fact that these vaccines have ma, been made differently was on purpose to avoid the problem that occurs with viruses, which is that they mutate. So this was anticipated when these geniuses decided to make this vaccine in this way. That's why th, those of us who are in the business of doing this are so excited still about this vaccine. Um, so the bottom line for the public is that the vaccine still protects you and it's very important to get vaccinated as soon as possible so that we can stop the spread of these variants. We do not want the variants to take over and become the predominant virus.
I guess you're saying because it's mRNA, that's?
Yes.
That's the reason why? Okay.
I don't want to complicate it.
And, and you had mentioned, you know, some of our residents who are getting, um, the COVID after being vaccinated. Um, what cautionary tales can you tell the public? You know, even if you've been vaccinated, you know, what should you continue to do?
If you've been vaccinated, um, and, and fully vaccinated, obviously if you have not been fully vaccinated, if you catch, um, you start having any symptoms at all, go get tested so that you know. That's number one. So first, go get tested. Um, the second one is if you are, then, um, most likely you're going to have a very, very mild case of the COVID. Um, you're not going to have to go to the hospital and you're not going to die. Okay? That is the most common thing, but you still have to be careful. Um, and this would be a good point now to make that there is treatment called anti-monoclonal therapy for people who come down with the virus and are not sick yet to get treated. It's difficult to get, but it is available. And, and for some reason, it's remained like a secret, um, because it's not readily available. And it's done through an infusion. You, you get an IV and you get this, um, and, um, monoclonal antibodies into your system to help you fight the virus. It's pretty simple to do. It's something that's been recommended for nursing home patients and other, uh, folks. It's before you get sick, before you have to go to the hospital. So, um, this therapy is available. Um, it needs to become more available. And, um, part of the reason that it's not as easy available is simply because it requires an infusion center or a place where people can get this done. And some of the hospitals don't have room for it, um, for whatever reason. But it is something that should be more, um, readily available. What they're doing now, some of the insurance companies like United Health, they're having it done in your home through the home health agencies that can go and do it to you at home. So, um, it's sort of one of those things that hasn't been talked about. And I think that in the future, uh, we should, uh, push on this to have it more available and so that people actually know about it.
Mr. Mayor, can I follow up?
Of course.
Uh, since you mentioned the monoclonal antibodies, um, I know that initially there are some hospitals who, uh, rejected having the monoclonal antibodies. Have that, have that changed or is it still a practice for some of those hospitals to not have it?
Some hospitals may have it. I don't know which ones do and don't. They, they have switched, uh, from having it to not having it.
And I know Baptist, like Boca Regional, Wellington, I believe also, they do have it. And some of the other hospitals didn't have it. So we don't.
Yeah, I haven't checked lately. We haven't asked that question. We can ask it at the next meeting to see which ones have it and don't have it. But also, like I said, the most logical thing would be home infusions at the, um, uh, a, uh, home agency could come and give it to you in your home or at a location where they would have it available. Um, some, there are other states that are using it a lot more than we are here in Florida.
Mr. Mayor, um, you know, you had mentioned some of the health insurance, uh, providers are, are doing that at home. Um, i, is it possible that we can take a look at from our insurance, uh, provider here for the county, for all our county employees to see, uh, if it's something that we can provide that to our employees? Mr. Mayor?
Certainly. I see, uh, Ms. Bolton shaking her head, but I'll turn to the county administrator first.
We have looked into that issue. Nancy, you want to come on up and provide the board? Uh, we were requested to look at it. We did. We spoke with our carrier. And as you well know, we are self-insured. So we're working through that process. And I'm going to turn it over to Nancy to provide you some more detail.
Good morning, everyone. Am I on? Yeah. Um, we are, the, the protocol is covered under Cigna. We were working with our representatives to determine the best communication. Uh, it is interesting, though, that the medical director for Cigna seemed to be of the opinion that the, the protocol was more directed toward, uh, very ill people, potentially even, um, to prevent hospitalizations. So, but I think it's, you know, I think that all protocol related to this virus is, is fluid. And so it is indeed covered. And so we will, uh, follow up with Cigna to see where they are on the communication front.
Mr. Mayor, Fitz, with the boards, um, would love for us to be able to take a look at that and see if we can provide that to our employees in the county. And, because I believe that that can, you know, potentially it would save costs, you know, without going to the hospitals. And, you know, if it, if it can be an infusion at home.
Is there any objection to that direction to the administrator?
No.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll move now to Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an interesting issue because now that we're going into phase, almost phase three, um, there has been much talk in the country about whether people should be required to have the vaccinations before they go to work, before they show up for schools. Uh, so my question is this. If everyone is vaccinated in a group, can someone pass the virus to someone who is already vaccinated? That is, if we have a group that everyone is vaccinated and they're working together, is there a possibility that in this closed pod, so to speak, that one vaccinated person could pass this virus to another vaccinated person?
I think the actual study on that is still out, to be perfectly honest with you, because it's, it's been debated back and forth. Um, some of the, they came out and they said at one point that you couldn't. And then they took it back and it's gone back and forth. There's 5% chance that the vaccine doesn't work, right? So I-
Now, this is in some, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this would be the Pfizer vaccine?
Pfizer and the Moderna.
And Moderna?
Are pretty much the same. And the-
After two shots?
After two shots.
Okay.
And the J&amp;J is a little bit less than that, but it, it's, it's in that area. Our numbers here are, are less than point half of a percent. That, the breakthrough that we have seen here in Palm Beach County. And this is consistent with other counties around. So as long as there's a, as long as there's a possibility that you can still catch the virus, the, the question is, can a person who has, who catches the virus after they've been vaccinated, are they able to transmit it? Yes or no?
That's the question.
So I think that until that is widely accepted and proven, that we should assume that we, that we can spread the virus.
So that, following that reasoning then, it would not make it absolutely necessary for people to mandate that everyone in their group become vaccinated. And I'm, this has been a discussion that has been political and social, but not necessarily medical. And that, I'm, I think I'm looking for a medical, uh, answer so that employers do not necessarily have to say, before you come to work, everybody needs to be vaccinated in our employment group or not. And would it be clear that your answer is, we just don't know yet?
Yeah. Medically, I feel we don't know yet. I, I personally need more proof before I take my mask off. Now, there, there are those who feel that they're fine, right? I don't think mandating, um, mandating something that you have to take is ever going to be popular or is ever going to be very effective because people will always find a medical exemption from a doctor, right? Um, we've been saying, and I've been saying, that we need to encourage people to get vaccinated, give them the information they need and let them make their own informed decision. We can't even vaccinate children at school. And one of our problems right now is that we've got a lot of kids coming back to school and there's a large number that have not been vaccinated. So we've been working very closely with the school district to allow us to get those kids vaccinated. We need to get them vaccinated. We don't want an outbreak of measles in the school after all the work that we've done to stop COVID, right? So we got to get these kids and we're encouraging all the parents who are sending their kids back to school to make sure that they go and get vaccinated.
Doc, just, doctor, just so we're clear, when you say we want to get them vaccinated, we're referring to the normal round of vaccines that student, young children go through?
Right.
Not COVID-19?
Exactly. So my point is that even for the regular vaccines, we have not been able to mandate. Now, private businesses can mandate. For example, hospitals, private hospitals mandate that their employees get the flu vaccine because they're putting patients at risk. And they can do that. We cannot mandate, uh, at the Health Department, we cannot mandate that. We do not mandate that our employees get vaccinated.
Because medically, we are not sure yet that if everybody is vaccinated, like a herd immunity type of situation, but everybody's vaccinated, that they still cannot pass the vac, the, the virus to someone else or, or become sick themselves. So, uh, we don't really need any mandatory vaccination policy at this time in our places of employment, uh, or other public or private areas until we have that medical information that's, that is not yet available to us.
That's, that's a good way to put it.
Okay, good. And I, and one other question, and it's really sort of a, a comment. I am so impressed that by the percentages of vaccinations by counties and age groups, uh, as a county commissioner, as many of my colleagues, we represent a high number of senior citizens, that we have the highest number of, uh, of vaccinations to our seniors, of any other major county in the, in the state of Florida. 67 major counties. So, um, and this is sort of a softball. What do you attribute that to?
To the, to our efforts of going into, um, not only the, well, one, I have to give the efforts to the seniors that have all come out and demanded to get vaccinated because they obviously want to get vaccinated. We can push the vaccine all we want, but if people don't want it, they, they're not going to get vaccinated. So number one, the effort goes to the, uh, seniors. And then the second effort is what we've done to go out to and reach out to them to make it available to them. So the, the efforts that were done, like at Kings Point, Century Village, that got hundreds of people vaccinated, thousands of people vaccinated. Um, the efforts that we have done, um, in special communities, the churches that have gone out. Um, and I think this is one of the biggest disservice that this article did was that it totally dismissed the efforts of all our partners that have been out there, um, you know, promoting the vaccine, giving the information to our seniors for them to come and get the vaccine at churches, at special events, at, um, multiple sites.
At pods.
The pods that have been set up and the vaccine that has come from the state to, to, um, add to the vaccine here in Palm Beach County. That has been very, very significant. So I think that it's been a huge effort from, and, and the support that this commission has given to us, um, the maps that we've made, all these, all these, all these efforts that have been made to make sure that we get people vaccinated. That effort, um, should be shared by everyone that's participated in this.
Thank you very much. Did you have anything to add to that, Mayor? I, and I, I absolutely agree that it's been with the efforts of, um, our county administrator, Ms. Baker, my colleagues on this board, uh, the churches, the pods, the big senior communities that have given Palm Beach County the number one slot for getting the majority of those folks who are most vulnerable and who suffered the most from this virus, getting the highest percentage of them vaccinated. And thanks to the seniors too. Thank you very much, Doctor. Thank you, Mayor.
And we're going to continue that because we still have some that need to get vaccinated. We want to get all of them vaccinated.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. And that concludes questions by the board and comments by the board. So I'll just close on, uh, a tangent to Commissioner Sacks who hit it on the head, which is, you know, my comments lately have been focused on thanking the public for their continued efforts, um, in mitigation efforts and wearing masks, socially distancing, being cognizant of other people's personal spaces, but also working hard to get out into the community to get vaccinated. And then the second point is, you know, we make high-level decisions here on, on the board and the county administrator at a high level, but there's thousands of government workers and, um, other non-governmental organizations that get up every day and, and make sure that we get shots and arms. And Palm Beach County is the epicenter of a vulnerable population, both from a diversity standpoint, but particularly from an age standpoint. And for us to be able to lead this state and our colleagues to the South in particular, Broward and Miami-Dade, speaks to the hard work that both teams have done, both the public at large and both the government and NGOs that are working diligently to make sure that a vaccination process goes smoothly. So thank you, thank you, thank you for what you do and what your staffers do and everybody in this community that continues to get up every day to execute on the most important mission that is before this board and before this community. With that, I don't see any further comments or questions from members of the board. Thank you again, Dr. Alonzo and Director Blakeney. We look forward to seeing you in the future. We'll transition now to Agenda Item 5, which is the regular agenda. If you would like to submit a public comment card, please do so prior to the agenda item being brought up. We're going to start with 5A1, which is Engineering and Public Works regarding a resolution amending, uh, our ordinances in the county with regards to a right-of-way on State Road 7.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no public comment, I'll go ahead and move item 5A1.
Very good. Is there any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion by Commissioner McKinley on Agenda Item 5A1, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. No public comment. All in favor, all opposed. That item passes 7, um, is, are you nay? On 5A1. It passes 6 to 1 with Commissioner Weiss dissenting. And we'll also take a roll call vote on 5B1. Uh, is there any public comment on 5B1?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Moreno, just in abundance of caution, did you have any comments or did you want to clarify your vote?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move approval of Item 5B1, A, B, and C.
Very good. A motion's been made by Commissioner McKinley.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Weiss. We're going to do a roll call vote?
Not Weiss.
All, okay, let's just vote. All in favor?
Seconded by Commissioner Weinroth, Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Oh, did I say Weiss? I apologize. You sure you don't want to second that motion? Motion's been made by Commissioner McKinley on 5B1, A, B, and C, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. All in favor, all opposed. 5B1, A, B, and C passes 6 to 1 with Commissioner Weiss dissenting. All right, we have on the regular agenda 5C1 and 2, which is a motion to receive and file mid-session legislative update. And I think we're going to have a little presentation by our very hard-working members of Legislative Affairs. Mr. Bonlaren, Mr. Chase, you recognize?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kerner.
Make sure your microphone's on, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Kerner. Vice Mayor Weinroth, members of the Board of County Commissioners. I just wanted to let you know before you is a hard copy of the PowerPoint, uh, that we were, are going to use to guide us through our conversation today. Uh, this is a mid-county or mid-session legislative update, uh, both based on some of the priorities that this board set forward, as well as some of the items that, uh, developed, uh, throughout the legislative session. Um, Chelsea from the County Attorney's Office is with us up here. Ed from Intergovernmental Affairs, um, to help work through, um, this proposal. And I appreciate all of the work that Teresa and Vicky, uh, our partners with the legislative delegation and our lobby team have been doing to get us to this point. Um, so we really wanted to start with some of the budget highlights. Just so you know, the budget for the House and Senate moved to the floor tomorrow, uh, for consideration by the full legislature. Uh, the revenue estimating conference is also meeting today. Uh, and as, uh, things looked pretty rough about in the last couple, uh, last year or so in terms of those estimates, uh, the outlook has begun to improve somewhat. And we expect to see, um, some bigger numbers. The most recent one was an over $3 billion shortfall in the, in the state budget. We think that those will, uh, improve considerably. This just shows you a side-by-side where the House and Senate are. They're about $2 billion apart, the House being $2 billion higher. But as you can see in some of the areas that we've been advocating, library grants and aid, library co-op, our library construction grant, some of the- aid, library co-op, our library construction grant, some of the historic preservation culture museum, and transportation disadvantaged dollars, all are really about where they should be right now. We're going to work on that library construction grant. Our Canyons Library is number two on that list, so funded in the Senate, not in the House, and we'll continue to work on that. The Job Growth Grant Fund, $26 million in the Senate. Enterprise Florida and Visit Florida are about matching up in the House and Senate, so it's good to see Visit Florida again at $50 million. And then Firdapp, our Recreation Development, that's $1,005,000 currently. None of our projects are in the money in that list, but we'll see if we can get some proviso in the bill. The next page on some of the environmental issues that we've been working on, obviously Everglades Restoration, you see $343 million and $319, respectively, in the House and the Senate. The Water Project List is out, we'll go over that in some more detail, but it's about $10 million apart between the Senate and the House at 39 and 29. And oftentimes, for those of you who've been following this, you know that that number typically gets added to as this process goes along with some additional amendments. Also wanted to point out the Resilient Florida Program, $29 million and $36 million, respectively, in the Senate and the House. That's a Speaker priority, and obviously that would benefit some local governments with the ability to apply for some grants for land acquisition, wastewater, water supply, emergency management services, and transportation. We're seeing some movement in Florida forever, $50 and $100 million in the Senate and the House. Beach Management, $50 and $100 million. We'll go over a little more detail on the next page of that. And then derelict vessel remover, removal, I know a priority of this board, $3.6 million in the House and the Senate. And we're doing everything we can to try to increase that number to remove some more of those derelict vessels that have been reported in our intercoastal waterways. Also wanted to point out that $50 million in recurring funds is in one of the conforming bills on Lake Okeechobee restoration. So how are we doing locally on some of our projects? Well, the first four of these are some specific county priorities we wanted to highlight. Restore reentry, we match up in the House and the Senate. That's our facility out in South Bay, so excited to see that in there. Central Palm Beach County infrastructure in Mayor Kerner's district and Commissioner Bernard's and Commissioner Weiss's. We're really focused on the central part of this county. We have $1,000,500 in the House right now, so very excited about that as we enter conference. Lakewood Lagoon at $250,000, and Locksahatchee River Preservation currently at $176,000. Just wanted to point out a few other highlights with some of the partners we're working with. Westec out in the Glades, $250,000 in the Senate. Mox Plonk on the north end of the county, matching up at $889,000. The Boca Rehab Center at $200,000. Even electric vehicle charging facility in the city of Boca Raton for Vice Mayor Weinroth at $250,000 in the Senate. Delray Beach, a summer reading program in the Senate. We're working with Senator Powell on that. Riviera Beach, a couple of projects in there on some utility money. Belle Glade Stormwater at $350,000. Pahokee King Park at $250,000. Ruth Rails in the Ride Rails, and then a couple of Royal Palm projects. So you can see we've got some dollars spread out throughout the community right now, and excited to have that in there. Wanted to focus on, you know, what I think is one of the real highlights, and that's our beach efforts for beach restoration. You can see a list of about $13.5 million of projects in Palm Beach County funded under the Senate's proposal. $4 million for the South Boca Raton Beach Nourishment, about $4.7 million for Midtown Beach Renourishment in Palm Beach, some money for Delray, Jupiter, Singer Island. So we've got a good list of funded projects right now in the Senate. We're going to work to up some of those numbers for the Locks River and Lakewood Lagoon. We actually have an amendment filed that will be on the floor of the House for $250,000 in Locks River. And then also some of the projects that we don't have currently funded, Peanut Island, fire rescue bunker geared, and Everglades workforce training. Our lobby team is working with us on some amendments, and we've been having some high-level conversations on seeing about getting some of those dollars included in the budget. As we look towards some of the bigger policy decisions, our top priority of Sadowski Housing Trust Fund, I know that some of you saw a deal that was struck between the House and the Senate where they were going to really pull back a lot of money from the Sadowski Fund. We're going to reduce it to about $140 million. So the House and the Senate have gotten back together again. And in an announcement that happened late yesterday in a late-filled amendment that will be considered tomorrow, they will be providing under that deal $200 million of that fund towards affordable housing. So a significant bump from where we were. There will still be $111 million for work wastewater projects, as well as $111 for some of our resiliency efforts. But we made some progress on that, and it was good to see that movement, and hopefully we can do even more. But we appreciate the legislature hearing our cries for that. Also, I wanted to point out the elections bill that's going through. House Bill 7041, also Senate Bill 90. Senate Bill 90 was supposed to be up this week, but it was pulled back from committee. They're working on some amendments. But there's a few things I just wanted to point out on this one. I mean, this is a really bad bill on a lot of different levels. A lot of incredible things that we did in this county to make sure that access to our voters was there, such as our drop boxes would be eliminated under some of these proposals, about the ability for people to receive their vote-by-mail ballots, a lot of restrictions being put on this. So I certainly don't want to lose focus of that because one of the issues we have talked a lot about is additional elections on the local level, too, in this bill for local officials. And I commend Ms. Neiman and her team for their work that they've been doing with statewide with the Florida Association of Counties on this issue and identifying some of the constitutional shortcomings of it. And the reality is that the Constitution says that Board of County Commissioners are elected to serve four-year terms. That's why they haven't had to run for those interim two years, and that's the argument that we have used with the legislature. It does not say that for Florida senators, which is why those Florida senators run every 10 years, sometimes for those two-year terms. So we have laid that out there. We'll continue to do that, and we'll continue to also use the issue of that, you know, more and more our public wants county commissioners to serve on the canvassing board. And if you're asking commissioners to run every cycle here, it makes it a lot harder for us to seat a member of the county commission on the canvassing board. And so we think it's important to have some of our elected officials on that accountability on the canvassing board. So that's another thing that we've been communicating to our legislators up there. So thank you all for the work that you've been doing. I know many of you have reached out to your colleagues up there. Ed can take us through some of our other priorities that we wanted to focus on.
Good morning, Commissioners. On State Road 715, we are working on a designation on behalf of Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office deputies, Danta Manuel and Jonathan Wallace, to redesignate a portion of that out on Pahokee. Commissioner McKinley, thank you for that. Both of those, both the House Bill and the Senate Bill are in the main transportation designation bills, so they are off and running. Senate Bill 334 is the Regulation of Smoking in Public Places, allows us and municipalities to restrict smoking, except for the smoking of cigars and pipes, that was an amendment two weeks ago, within the boundaries of any of our public beaches and the public parks that we own. That is currently in the Senate Rules Committee, and the House Bill is in its second of third committees. There are three emergency management bills I'd like to talk about. The first one is not exactly on our support category. That is the large Senate Bill 1924. That is the bill limiting local government emergency orders. The Senate sponsor of that bill last week said that it is his intention to merge that bill into another large Senate bill. That would be Senate Bill 2006 by Burgess. So that will take everything in 1924, which would include the expiration of emergency orders after 10 days. That limit is seven days in the House Bill, giving the governor or legislature the power to invalidate those actions, and requiring counties and local governments to prove that their actions are narrowly tailored, serve a compelling governmental interest, and are done with the least intrusive means. So as that moves into 2006, 2006 is a large, more all-encompassing bill, much like 7047 in the House. So that does everything we just spoke about, including putting some more burdens upon the State Department of Emergency Management, as well as our local Department of Emergency Management with regard to paperwork and creating a detailed spending plan that would have to be submitted before and 30 days after each emergency. Been in contact with our local emergency management director, as well as their state organization, and they are working to oppose that. The two emergency management bills that we are supporting, however, are public records exemptions. Senate Bill 418 would exempt the name, address, and telephone number of a person held by a shelter during an emergency. That's a bill that our county has been working on for some time. That is in the Senate Bill is being heard today. The House Bill has already passed 115 to zero. The other public records request exemption that we are looking at is 1824 and 1153. That would exempt after-action reports and emergency assessment reports for public records. That was a bill that was put forth by former Emergency Management Director Bill Johnson and now pushed forward by current Emergency Management Director Mary Blakeney. That bill has been heard in the Senate once, but has not yet been heard in the House. Some issues that we oppose, and the list is rather lengthy, so bear with us. Todd, do you want to start on Public Works project?
Yeah, so to share some information about this particular bill, this one is really a direct assault on local government preference programs, one that we've put in place and that have been put in place across the state in different jurisdictions. We have been working closely with the Association of Counties to amend this piece of legislation. Initially, it said that any project using any local or state money, you would not be able to use different preferences, local preferences, mentoring programs and the like, all the kinds of things that this board has approved and made a priority in our county. We've removed some of the language in there about some of the local dollars and then have created some additional thresholds about state money. Right now, $300,000 cap that we're trying to continue to work with the legislature on. But we're still actively working on amending that piece of legislation and negotiating that bill in Tallahassee. But just wanted to let you know that our team has been on top of that throughout this entire process. And then on impact fees, Ed?
We'll talk about, just quickly, code enforcement. Senate Bill 60 has passed the full Senate. House Bill 883 is in its final House Committee. That would prohibit code inspectors from inspecting or following up on any anonymous code complaints in the future. A name and address would have to be along with a code complaint. On impact fees, we are down to three major issues on Senate Bill 750, which is the main impact fee, impact fee bill this year. Number one is the fee cap. That is still an ongoing issue. The fee cap started at a maximum of 3% a year. That was moved away and amended out. The current legislation would stop local governments from raising impact fees any more than 50% over a four-year period. So we are continuing to oppose that cap that would limit any of our ability to adjust for rises in construction costs. The other question is what qualifies as infrastructure? A few amendments that have been accepted helped this bill tremendously. It would allow a school district to buy buses, but it certainly would allow local governments to purchase emergency vehicles, fire, and police for our use, for using those fees. And finally, our last, and kind of the main issue that is, remains is credit language. So we have concerns about how, with the credit language with respect to transportation facilities. So the language seems to require credits for contributions to public facilities that would might be surface streets or cul-de-sacs that might not really be the true type of public facilities for which impact fees are charged. So we are working with the League of Cities and the Florida Association of Counties to tighten up those kind of credit issues. So Senate Bill 750 is in its final committee in appropriations, and the House Bill has one more stop in the House. Senate Bill 268 is the Preoccupation of Local Occupational Licensing. This would preempt, strictly preempt, the licensing of occupations to the state and supersede any local government licensing of occupations, with the exception of those authorized by general law. So this is a bill that is being pushed by our builders and general contractors. In the language itself, it does list out a number of specific building-related jobs that would not be able to be licensed by local government. It does, however, leave open the fact that Florida law does specifically grant local jurisdictions the right to levy reasonable business, professional, and occupational regulatory fees with the cost of regulatory activity, including consumer protection, on regulations that we deem to be important. So that still would include our adult entertainment and our home care license procedures, as well as taxis and vehicles for hire. That Senate Bill is in its final committee as we speak at 9:30 this morning. The Senate, the House Bill has already passed through the House. Senate Bill 1382 on building inspections requires local government agencies to allow requests for inspections to be submitted electronically. It could be by email, electronic fill-in form, or an application on a mobile device. It also provides that a local enforcement agency must refund 10% of the permit and inspection fees if the inspector or building official determines the work which requires the permit fails an inspection and the inspector or building official fails to provide a reason that is based on the building code within five business days. That, an amendment recently moved that timeframe from three to five, but that is something that we are still working to oppose. House Bill 284 on building design, that would prohibit local governments from adopting regulations requiring specific design elements for single- or two-family homes. So building design elements could be anything like exterior color, type, style, or cladding style of roof, porches, style of windows, or doors. It does not include setback, height, or bulk location, or buffering, or screening. A, an amendment allowing local governments to apply building design restrictions in PUDs or master plan communities by local ordinance did pass last week. So we are looking for that bill in the Rules Committee in the Senate. It's its final stop there, and it's on the House's second reading calendar. House Bill 1084 is volunteer ambulance services. This bill would exempt faith-based volunteer first responder agencies that have operated for at least 10 consecutive years from the Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity, the COPCN requirement. It would prohibit a county or municipal government from limiting, prohibiting, or preventing a volunteer ambulance service from responding to an emergency or providing emergency medical services or transport within its jurisdiction. This is something that we are working to oppose with our local fire union, as well ours. Our Department of Public Safety is fully engaged on this issue as well. That Senate Bill is in its final stop in appropriations. The House Bill is in its final stop in the Health and Human Services Committee. Vacation rentals, it was, that bill was temporarily postponed in the House Ways and Means Committee about two weeks ago. It is laid low ever since. We expect that bill to be picked up in the Senate at some point. That would only leave preemption for the regulation of advertising platforms to the state. So it would not add any more issues to the county, just the preemption for those platforms. We would expect to see that pop up in the Rules Committee in the Senate when it finally comes back up. Senate Bill 2008 and House Bill 1429 was a tourism taxes bill that would have allowed local governments to spend tourist taxes to combat climate change flooding and would have required a referendum on new and existing tourism development taxes. That bill was amended significantly so that it just would require a referendum on new taxes. However, we are still opposed to that bill based on the fact that we do not, we oppose any expansion of the use of those tourism taxes. That bill was temporarily postponed in the Senate Community Affairs Committee last week. That committee is not expected to meet again, so we do not expect to see any further development on that tourism tax issue. Senate Bill 1678 on 1129 is on sovereign immunity that would have raised the caps on levels of tort claims against the state and local governments. That bill, neither of the House or Senate Bill has seen its first of three committees, so we are hoping that that will die a very quick death. Senate Bill 102 and House Bill 153, Attorney General Matters of Great Governmental Concern. This is a, this is a nationwide effort by the United States Chamber of Commerce in an effort to kind of rein in local counties from enjoining in class action lawsuits against companies. So the intention of this bill is if there are 15 or more counties that might enjoin in a class action lawsuit, this would give the legislature the opportunity to declare a matter of great governmental concern, which would then turn over to the Attorney General the sole capability to intervene in any legal proceeding, to consolidate, dismiss, settle anything on behalf of all of those entities. In addition, any, any windfall that would have, that would appear, that would be appropriated by the legislature. That bill is currently in its last stop in the Senate Rules Committee, and it is its final stop in the House Judiciary Committee. It is something that the Florida Association of Counties and the League of Cities is keeping a very close and worrisome eye on. Senate Bill 1954 is the statewide sea-level resilience bill. This is the bill that creates This is the bill that creates the Resilient Florida Grant Program and would provide grants to local governments. I want to thank our Office of Resiliency, as well as the South Florida Climate Compact for their involvement. Very early on, they were involved with Noah Valenstein and the Department of Environmental Protection in kind of negotiating this bill to get it along in a much better stance. This bill is on special order in the House and the Senate for tomorrow. Senate Bill 972, Administrative Telecommunication Meetings. That is a bill that would permit the Southeast Florida Regional Climate Change Compact to conduct meetings via communications technology. It is a specific bill narrowly tailored to take care of the Climate Compact. It did pass through its first Senate committee, but it is still remaining in its first House committee to be heard.
And just as a follow-up on that bill, too, I know we had a conversation with Vice Mayor Weinroth yesterday on the issue, and you're going to be seeing this issue after this one here, on sort of quorums and some of our local advisory boards. So we did meet with Miami Dade, Hillsborough County, the Florida Association of Counties, Broward County yesterday on a couple of ideas on addressing some of those issues legislatively. FAC has submitted amendments and letters to the Attorney General's Office requesting some opinions on that, but Broward is looking at doing similar to what we've done with the local ordinance. Miami Dade, Hillsborough are working with the legislature on some additional language to try to clarify that and some amendments up there. So we'll look at it from a couple of different options, but just wanted to share that feedback with you that we got from our meetings yesterday. And finally, on Senate Bill 84 on retirement. So this is a bill that we've been working with, with a number of our unions around the state, and it would prohibit workers, state workers hired after July 2022 from joining the Florida Retirement's traditional pension plan and require any new employees to enter into a 401K-type investment instead of a defined benefit. So we obviously feel like this benefit, and particularly for recruiting and retaining employees, is a tremendous one for us in the public sector, and we've been watching it pretty closely. It is a priority of the Senate President. Miami Dade has already done an ordinance opposed to this particular bill, and we'll keep you posted on the status of that one.
And finally, from the, from the Tallahassee side of things, just an update on some of the local bills that are and are not moving through committee. House Bill 979 for the Village of Wellington, which would prohibit the sale and use of fireworks within the Equestrian Preserve. That is currently on second reading on the House calendar. House Bill 915 for the Port of Palm Beach, that bill has been amended during the process. So all of this, all of the issues there remain the same. The swearing-in date has been changed. The changing of the title to the Port Director remains, but the salary issue was changed in the original bill. It did raise the salary, but gave the Port Commission the option to raise it in the future. That language is taken out, so statutorily, that salary will be reset at $12,500 in statute. And if the port decides that they want to raise their salaries in the future, they would have to come back and amend their special act. That building is, that bill is in its second of two committees in State Affairs. 1185, the Indian Trails Improvement District, they're determining their feasibility of converting the district into a municipality. It is currently waiting to be heard in its second of two committees. And 1035, the Loxahatchie River Encon Control District Bill. It is a codification of their, of that special act. They did have some minor technical amendments that were approved by the delegation, but it is currently on the House second reading calendar. House Bill 973, the Town of Lake Clark Shores, they were trying to annex their Edgewater Park enclave. That bill has yet to be heard in its first of three committees.
And then Commissioners, just to turn from the state a little bit to the federal government, very quickly, I'm just going to go through a list with you of a couple of projects that we have been working on for federal earmarks. So federal earmarks have not been available for the past 11 years, and our members of our delegation are excited about the opportunity to move forward with earmarks in Washington, DC. So here are a couple of proposals that we've put forward and hoping that the board can bless these for us today as we submit some of these applications to our congressional offices. The Peanut Island Coast Guard Facility and Kennedy Bunker Restoration at $1.5 million we're proposing to put in. The Lake Okochobee Shoreline Restoration at $1.6 million, of which we also have a state request in. Our Providencia K Project, which is part of the Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative at $2 million. Our Green Cave Phase Two, which is our state-of-the-air water utilities facility on the south end of the county at $10 million. Palm Tran with two particular requests at $16 million for bus shelter infrastructure and $17.29 million for our bus fleet electrification. And then also out of engineering, Flavor Picked Road, a $27 million project, south end of the county to construct 1.7 miles of new roadway over the Turnpike. Also in community services, two projects on $1 million for recuperative homeless care and then $1 million for securing our future initiative, which will help increase some economic mobility for families of low income. Our Canyon Branch Library, half a million dollar request, that we also have one for the similar amount at the state level. $250,000 for our Mounts Botanical Gardens Visitor and Welcome Center. And finally, a $1.8 million request for the North County Runway Expansion. We've spent a considerable amount of time with staff reviewing some of the qualifications for the federal applications, and many of these meet those. Many other projects we wanted to recommend did not meet some of those qualifications. But Mayor, that is our update for mid-session and our proposal of some of our federal appropriations projects to work with our congressional delegation. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for a very thorough update on a very important aspect of how our government is run, which is the legislature and what powers they give or take from us and what budgetary appropriations they give or take from us. We'll start with Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Do you have any opinions on the FRS bill? Sorry.
What's that?
On the FRS bill, any opinion from you?
I think it's abhorrent, and I don't want to overs, I don't want to take your place, but at some point I was going to ask if we can actually write a particular letter on that bill if there was a board consensus. I mean, we're talking about, and it's in various versions, and the cops are taken out of it, and maybe the firemen are taken out of it and put back in, but, you know, not to be on a soapbox, but these, these professionals go to work every day, men and women in law enforcement, firefighting, our teachers, government workers as a whole. The one thing that they can rely on is not necessarily high pay, maybe not the greatest equipment at times or the best working conditions, but that when they retire, they have a pension. I'm a product of that. My father served as a police officer for 30 years and was able to send me to college at the University of Florida because of his pension and buy a home. I think it is an attack on the working man and women, and we have fought this bill in the legislature every year. I was in the legislature, you were Senator Sacks. This is an attack on the working American public.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was proud to stand by your side on some of those conversations recently in Tallahassee, so I would go ahead and move that staff direction to issue that letter.
Very good. Without objection. That would be great. And should it come from the county mayor or from the administration? Very good. I'd be honored to sign it.
Just a couple of questions for staff. First of all, and comments, on the Senate Bill 102 regarding the lawsuits. I was able to testify on behalf of the Association of Counties on this bill last year in opposition to former Attorney General Bill McCollum and the initiative that the U.S. Chamber is taking. I think it's imperative that our local delegation understand the financial as best we can. I know we're involved in litigation and we can't really show all of our cards, but around about financial impact that local government has faced, that our county has faced in responding to this. And the one figure that comes to mind is when I spoke in committee last year, we were estimating it was about $1,500 per fire rescue call to respond to an overdose. Chief Durren has recently reevaluated those numbers, and it is actually upward of $3,500 per fire rescue call. I think that figure is pretty significant in why local government should still have the ability to file those lawsuits on our residents' behalf. My question, it was announced this morning in light of the, hopefully not, but the impending environmental disaster in eastern Manatee County and Piney Point, that Senator Boyd is going to, he's requesting $300 million. This is our second-half-a-session surprise, right? Happens every year. That $300 million, any idea of where that's coming from or where that might come from and how it could impact some of our requests?
So I do not have a good idea of where they're looking to take those dollars from. My, my hope is it's not from Sadowski Housing Trust Fund, since they just did that, so that would be good. However, one of the things that, you know, we're looking at and one of the kind of plans to talking to the governor's office on the Sadowski piece, particularly because a part of that is for wastewater, that they've designated $111 million. I would hope that maybe a portion of that might come from some of the federal funds through, that the Biden administration has put forward and Congress has approved, because there are, there is flexible language in there that allows for those dollars to be used for certain water and wastewater-related programs. So if they're looking at some large sums of money like that, there is allocated, unallocated federal funding that may be able to use a portion of that, but I haven't seen any particular proposals on exactly where they would take that money from yet.
Mayor, Commissioners, this, this is over in my neck of the woods of where I grew up, and I have reached out to the chairs of the Manatee, Pinellas and Hillsborough County Commission, you know, to offer our support if this should happen. A similar breach of one of these ponds years ago led into a spill in the Alafire River that killed every living, breathing organism in that river in a 42-mile stretch. This sits right on the shores of Tampa Bay, just under the Sunshine Skyway, right across, almost point-to-point from Fort DeSoto State Park and the environmental areas in the southern tip of Pinellas County, as well as where all the freight comes in and out of the Port of Tampa. This is serious. So Ms. Baker, I mean, anything that our emergency management team can do in mutual aid agreements with those emergency operations center, I hope we reach out to them. And then two questions on the, the federal issues that you brought up. With the very sad news of Congressman Hastings passing, we know that each member of Congress is going to be limited in the number of requests that they're able to make. Is it okay to assume that his office will be granted a special exception and one of our other delegation members would be able to pick up his requests, or is that something that we need to ask for?
Yeah. Commissioner McKinley, you know, Ms. Baker and I obviously share in the loss of Congressman Hastings. I know he was a mentor to Administrator Baker. He was somebody that was really an advocate for many years of issues that we've brought forward to him. It's 20 years I worked with him. Ed, you worked side-by-side with him, too, when you worked in Congress. And I think that we're going to let their staff, we know this is a really, you know, tough time for them, so we're going to, we're going to mourn with them for the next few days on this and, and pay the respect to the congressman. But I do believe that leadership in Congress will be very understanding of some of the needs of Congressman Hastings' district. I've seen in previous sessions where you've had sitting members pass away, that there were special opportunities to work with their office, with their staff, to move some of that legislation and also appropriations forward. And I expect that our delegation will be there 100% to work with the staff in Congressman's Hastings' office to continue to advance some of his priorities. So I think that history has shown that, that leadership in the legislature has been, been very, very amenable to those kinds of requests. So we'll, we'll work with staff and we'll get with them at the appropriate time to, to figure out how to cart that path forward. But yeah, understand.
Yeah, he was an unbelievably fierce advocate for the Glades, and I always loved, those of you that didn't get to hear a whole lot of speeches, when he would come through the churches out in the Glades, and he talked about being a kid and coming down to Pahokee and picking green beans when he was a child. I'll miss him dearly on those, on those, and so many other issues. And my final question, we have one road project in here for Flavor Picked Road. This is going to be separate from any infrastructure proposals that are put before Congress?
Mayor, Commissioner, that is correct. So we have a couple of shots at some of the infrastructure funding. This is one request that we have that's ready to go from an earmark perspective under the guidelines that were put forward from our congressional offices. We also simultaneously are also filling out similar requests for the infrastructure package. We are doing that now. Mr. Ricks and I have had an opportunity to talk about a couple of other projects throughout the county that may be able to qualify under that infrastructure package. So we'll be bringing something back to you, I think maybe in a couple of weeks, with some other ideas. But the three transportation projects that we've included in this packet, we will also submit as part of the infrastructure bill as well, but we'll be looking at some of the other projects that we have that are currently pending to see what else we can include in there. And there's, there are some big projects that might qualify under that.
Okay, well, thank you, Todd. There is an article that came out that spoke of the White House making special priorities for rural roads. And after driving once again along County Road 880 on Sunday morning, you actually either drive down the middle of the road or in the opposite lane heading westbound because it's just too dangerous to drive for a small vehicle. And we talk a lot about that being a road that's predominantly used by agriculture, but it's also the only route, if anything should happen and shut down State Road 80, that's the alternative of trying to get around to Belle Glade and South Bay and all points west of that. So when you're putting that list together, I'd like to make sure that we have, also have a focus on those rural roads.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. We'll move now to Vice Mayor Weinroth and then to Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this session is obviously living up to that phrase that it's the most dangerous 60 days of the year. It really is stunning to watch the assault on Home Rule and to watch what these legislators feel that they're more intelligent about handling than people who were elected by city councils, city commissions and county commissions. I'm just stunned by their inability to see that these decisions are better left to the representatives who are local to our stakeholders, people that they can come and have their voice heard by, in a forum like this, rather than having to fly up to Tallahassee and being relegated to an off-site location to address the, the legislature. This is really mind-numbing. The preemption of occupational licenses, while it might sound like it's just a, another way of helping small businesses, is a way of, of preempting zoning by our local municipalities and by this county. Code enforcement, that you have to be giving your name and address when there is a flagrant violation, and so code enforcement can't go out and address those violations and see for themselves as an impartial observer that something is going on and respond to it. It is just, and I don't, you know, three of my colleagues have come from Tallahassee. They did their, their time up there, and I really don't understand what goes on up there. And I know that you were, for the most part, in the minority party up there, so, you know, we have to sort of take our lumps when we go up there, but this, this is just stunning. And anything we can do as a delegation, even though we're coming from a blue county in a red state, there's got to be some way of stopping this. This is just, goes on and on. And I guess the, the icing on the cake is the fact that the Sadowski Housing Trust Fund continually acts as a piggy bank. And every time we have an emergency, whether it was Hurricane Michael or anything else that comes down the pike, or now we have this potential disaster in Manatee County, and this is just the piggy bank everybody goes to. We have so many problems with housing. We had them before the pandemic, and now we have them even worse. Commissioner Bernard was looking to have this county step up and put a bond issue together to- together to try and address this. And we had to defer on that because of what's going on with this pandemic. And the governor himself said that this was a priority for him, to keep this money together and use this money just for housing. And even he can't stop it. I'm, I'm just stunned. I don't know what to say, other than fight the good fight. You know, this is just, home rule is something that's in our constitution and I don't understand why it keeps on getting beaten up this way. I don't know what Senator Perry's problem is with the, the way that we are handling home offices here. It's just, I'm speechless. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Well said. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you. You're doing a great job. I know it's difficult. And to my colleague to my right, they've been doing this for years and we've been surviving pretty damn well here in the county. So I think that our local legislators are do, are fighting a good fight. And we're not over yet. This is halfway. Things happen in the last couple of weeks. Things shift. So don't be stunned. Just get to work and make sure that letters are written, Commissioner Weinroth, and support is given to our local legislative leaders and to our great staff here that works up there all the time. Let's get specific. With Senate Bill 1429, House Bill 2008, the tourist development taxes, this is not going to be mandatory in terms of putting our money in that we get from tour, okay, just wanted to be sure. And one other thing that I, on a good note, many years ago, there was a terrible death here in Palm Beach County of a little girl named, I think her name was Haley Brockington. And she died in the backseat of a childcare van that was transporting a little girl. She fell asleep in the back. Nobody checked and consequently she passed away. And, and, and it happened that same year in Broward. A little boy passed away. And we filed a bill and it didn't go, it didn't pass. It was maybe, maybe 10 years ago this occurred. Now it's come up and I'm going to ask you if it's got legs. And that is Senate Bill 252 by, and it's, it's called Child Safety Alarm Act. I wonder if we could track that and make sure that it does finally pass. Cause it's, you know, and what's interesting, and I say this to my colleagues, this terrible accident occurred in Palm Beach County. We tried very hard to pass the bill. It didn't pass. But under the leadership of Commissioner Bert Aronson, we pass a county ordinance that mandated these childcare safety alarms. So in spite of the legislature not following through on an issue that was very important, not only just to Palm Beach County, but to all, all children in the state of Florida, we in Palm Beach County filed that and passed that ordinance here in Palm Beach County. So I'm, I'm really very proud of our, of our county commission. Even, I wasn't a part of that at that time, but we went ahead and did it. And so I hope that we keep an eye on this Senate bill and see if it goes through because it all started here and hopefully that protection will extend to the other 67 counties as well. Thank you for your hard work and thank you, Commissioner McKinley. I know you were up there doing all the influence that you can so that we get the monies back from Tallahassee that we send up there. And it, and I think that we're halfway through. Maybe we'll, we'll be able to fight some of these bad bills, get some of the money down. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you.
Commissioner Sacks, on that issue, Senate Bill 252 is on the Senate Special Order Calendar for tomorrow and it is in its last of three, House committees as well. We'll keep an eye on it.
We named it the Haley Brockington Bill and it didn't pass. It was tough that it didn't. But in our honor, I hope that it does. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. We'll move now to Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, as my colleagues have identified, I mean, I, this is just to me shocking to see what's happening up there this year. I mean, every day when I either see the news or open the newspaper and, and see what they're doing, it's really, really disappointing when we know we have so many difficult and challenging issues that we're facing and where, where they seem to prioritize. Couple of things in, just to follow along on, on Commissioner McKinley's comments regarding Piney Point and, and that, in, in regards to, and I had the same, sort of same concerns regarding to the funding of that, because I saw that they, I mean, it's going to require a large, obviously a large amount of money to clean that up. And so I, I'm also very concerned about where they're going to take that from. As we know, the Sadowski is usually the easiest place for them to go and raid and that, that would be my concern. But hopefully they'll find another, another pot of money to be able to get that from.
Commissioner, on that issue, the, the amendments that Senator Boyd filed on appropriations was for $3 million, which would be taken from the statewide capital depreciation fund.
Good. As it relates to the voting, the changes in our elections and how they're held and so forth, I saw a presentation by our supervisor of elections, Lenk, and she had, she had indicated that all 67 county supervisor of elections come from all different parties, all are unanimously opposed to, to what they're trying to do up there.
Yeah, Commissioner, so one of the great things is when you've got somebody like Alan Hayes, who I know that Commissioner Sacks served with, who was a very conservative member. Commissioner Bernard, you remember that as well, and same with you, Mayor Kerner. You know, he's been the one in the face of this in opposition on behalf of the Supervisor Elections Association. So I think that the SOEs could have no better spokesperson in front of those, you know, committees, speaking on their behalf and opposition to some of that legislation. I know also Mike Bennett, another former member of the Senate, also a supervisor of elections official. So we've got some really good spokespeople on behalf of the supervisors up there, but it still has been a tough road and really in the House of Representatives, we've been working closely with Blazing Goglea, who's the sponsor there. Senator Baxley is the sponsor of the Senate bill. Hopefully we'll make a little bit more headway and hopefully maybe by not having that bill come up this week is, is maybe a good sign that they're continuing to work deeper on some amendments to prepare for that particular piece of legislation. But, but yeah, there's, there's a good team of advocates to, to make those points, but she's exactly right.
I, I, you know, I had the, the honor and the privilege to serve on the canvassing board during the last election cycle. And I mean, I, absolutely, our elections were held and done properly here. The security was at, at the highest levels and, you know, it was done well. And so to, to see them taking the steps that other states are enacting under some kind of national agenda that they're deciding they're going to be a part of, I'm, I'm also very concerned, the fallout of what we've seen happening up in Georgia and to come underneath that as well, those potential, the economic impact, as just, we're trying to come out from underneath this terrible pandemic and we are so dependent on tourist dollars in this state. It would just, to me, would, would be a real tragedy to see that our people would have to, would be suffering because of, of legislation like this. The, the last point I wanted to ask about was, there's a bill that's to limit unions and it wasn't on our list initially. But now I understand that they're now creating exemptions to exempt certain unions from having to follow those rules. And it, to me, that just, it doesn't sit well. If you're going to treat unions the same, then treat them the same. But to, to be able to carve out and treat some unions differently, it just, it leads me to believe that there's something much more nefarious, is not the right word, but that, that this isn't, it's not all on the up and up and that they're afraid of upsetting some unions but not others. And that, you know, if one thing we've learned in this country, that, you know, there is equality and that every, you know, if you're going to treat a class of people, they need to be under the same rules. And I would ask that this board take a position to oppose that. I know we did, wasn't on our list initially, but now seeing what's happening and the fact that they're horse trading to try and push this through, I think it makes sense for us to put it on our list of opposing bills.
Commissioner Weiss on the list or a specific letter tailored to that particular bill in opposition?
Pardon me?
Is your intent to maintain that on our list as a whole that we're going to hopefully approve? Or did you want a specific letter written?
I would, I mean, if we would be willing to write a letter, I think that would, that would be.
Any opposition to Commissioner Weiss's direction? All right.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the suggestion.
Any further comments?
No, sir.
Very good. I don't have any comments. Keep up the great work. I would like just to bring up tangentially, not related to this agenda item, but from time to time, we do get requests for letters of support from outside organizations, simply to just write a letter to support them. I think as an individual commissioner, we each have our own decision where we can, on our individual basis, write a letter if we'd like. And then if it's something that you'd like the board to get behind as a whole, you know, maybe it should be, just be brought up in comments. Usually they're not that, I don't know, they're, they're usually easy things to sign on to. What's your recommendation, Todd? Have we done it in the past?
So you're talking about in terms of some of these federal requests that are coming your way?
Yeah, like Lord's Place, for one example, came to us for a letter of support.
So I think that there's a lot of really good projects in the community right now. Lord's Place is one. I think that Vice Mayor Weinroth had another agency that reached out to him that he was going to bring up in comments today as well. And, and I've met with Congresswoman Frankel with groups, and I know Verdina has been there with us as well, who all have expressed interest. Many of them have got really, really good ideas out there. I think that the deadlines on some of these proposals are pretty tight and I, you know, most, almost every one of them I would support. I would say that if you can maybe give a little deference to staff to, you know, review any of those that might come up in the days, you know, from here on out to those deadlines, that, and supporting those to give some deference to us and supporting some of the community organization requests through, through their members of Congress, we can work with them to write letters on behalf of the board to do that. Or we can, you know, put it on an agenda really quickly coming up soon and, and get something in after the fact if it's beyond those as well. But if you have some today, I mean, one thing we're asking for is a, a motion to support the 12 projects that we put before you. I think that the two projects that you, Mayor Kerner, and Vice Mayor Weinroth had put forward are ones that we as staff absolutely support and work with those organizations, great causes. And as those other ones come up, we can work quickly with you to, to try to do something, to sign something in advance and then maybe bring it back at a later date to get the board's blessings on it, just to meet those grant deadlines, similar to what we do with other grants. So we'll try, we can try to vet those for you pretty quickly. But I've gotten word of a number of requests that I think are very worthy in the community.
Very good. I think we trust your judgment as professional staff to maneuver properly and make those determinations, whether it would be controversial or not. I can't imagine anything being controversial being brought to you or to the county administrator.
And many of these organizations we give grants to already, our staff works very closely with them. So certainly areas that we've supported directly and indirectly, you know, obviously I think there's a nexus to that support.
A very large and obvious nexus. So thank you for that. We, we don't need to bring everything for, for a motion or a direction. But on 5C1, is there a motion to receive and file and by implication approve the projects on the list that has been discussed?
Move to approve.
A motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Weiss on 5C1. All in favor? All opposed? That passes 7-0. Please keep up the great work and God bless you. 5C2, stack recommendation, recommendation motion on preliminary reading advertised for public hearing and ordinance of county commission. Is there any public comment on 5C2, Commissioner Bernard?
No, Mr. Mayor.
On 5E1? Would any, anyone like a presentation on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I think we've discussed this before, the fact that we want our voluntary, voluntary boards to have a little more latitude. And I think that this would sort of, would facilitate that. So I'm going to move to approve 5C2.
Couldn't agree more. 5C2's been moved by Vice Mayor Weinroth and seconded by Commissioner Weiss. There's no public comment or comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? 5C2 passes 7 to 0. That brings us now to 5D1 with regards to what would normally appear on the consent agenda, but because of its, the size of the appropriation, being over 300,000, it's before the board, I don't need a motion on it. It is Commissioner Weiss's district technically, in that it's Palm Beach International Airport. Motion by Commissioner Weiss and seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. There's no public comment or comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? 5D1, A and B passes 7 to 0. Thank you. We move now to 5E1, a very important topic with public comment. And this is on a staff recommendation motion to receive and file. It's a nine-month status report on the Lewis Center Annex.
Nancy, give me one second.
You're recognized?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Board. For the record, I'm Nancy Bolton, Assistant County Administrator. Here at the table with me are Isame Ayala Kalazo, who is a legend, and I'm so sorry to have mispronounced her name, Director of FDO. James Green, Director of Community Services. Eric McClellan, Facilities Development and Operations, and also Wendy Tippett, Director of Human Services. On February 25th, 2020, the board allowed the county to temporarily transform the former stockade facility at Fairgrounds Road into a homeless resource center, which could provide accommodations to up to 125. The temporary center was urgently needed to address safety concerns for a rapidly growing population of individuals residing in tents in John Prince Park. This temporary facility, which is referred to as the Lewis Center Annex, will serve clients while the homeless resource center two on Lake Worth Road is being constructed. The expected completion date of that facility is in March of 2023. The board directed staff to provide a status report on the Lewis Center Annex following nine months of operation. That is our purpose before you this morning. And at this point, with the mayor's permission, Wendy Tippett will begin the presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners and Administrator Baker. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present the Lewis Center nine-month report to you. It's been a wild nine months, let me just tell you. So the Lewis Center Annex was a direct response to the large encampment that occupied John Prince Park and the pandemic, during the pandemic. The Department of Community Services expanded its outreach teams in response to the pandemic and the homeless crisis. Over 200 persons were identified in John Prince Park and services included COVID testing, placement into non-congregate sheltering, diversion to family and friends, and eventual placement of some of the residents into the Annex Center. Approximately 100 residents from John Prince Park were placed into the Annex after receiving COVID tests and isolation sheltering. The Annex Center, which doubles as a stockade, was converted to house up to 125 homeless persons. Thank you very much for that. 25 beds were set aside for COVID isolation and PBSO drop-offs. This would not have been possible without the outstanding work of FDO, PBSO, Parks and Rec, and other nonprofit partners. Rapid rehousing strategy is for clients to enter into, oh, sorry, I don't know why that's on my notes. Excuse that. Many people are not familiar with what Tent City looked like in John Prince Park. The picture on the left is an overhead aerial view from PBSO drone that clearly demonstrate the vast amount of space that was overtaken by Tent City. The picture on the right, again, has an overhead aerial view, shows what the park looks like today. A big thank you to, to you as Commissioners for making the Annex Center a reality, as well as the many partners that played a critical role in this undertaking. as the many partners that played a critical role in this undertaking. The Neighborhood Oversight Committee was formed in June of 2020 and includes representation from the surrounding neighborhoods, PBSO, county staff, and the South Florida Fair. The partnership with PBSO and the surrounding communities has been essential in curbing behaviors such as loitering, littering, et cetera, around the facility and the surrounding area. Communication has been the key to the Annex Center's success, as well as quick response to neighborhoods and businesses that were impacted. In an effort to meet the needs of the community, PBSO has increased the presence in the 441 corridor. An additional homeless outreach team has been assigned to the area. PBSO will begin to institute a friendly visitor program in the Annex within the next few months, and an online referral process has been instituted to allow PBSO to send direct referrals to the homeless outreach team when they encounter homeless encampments or persons in need of a hot assessment. Additionally, the homeless outreach team or HOT has canvassed the business community to ensure that there are no trespassing signs posted, and Palm Beach County has done the same for properties owned along Weisman Way. The Annex Center opened on the 20th of July, and as of March 30th, 2021, have served 352 homeless men, women, and seniors. The demographic information shows that persons exited from shelter, 47% are African American, 50% are white, and 3% are other. Currently in shelter, there are 59% white, 38% African American, and still 3% other. This is consistent with what we see in all other Palm Beach County shelters. The age range of persons residing at the Annex are demonstrated on this page. The largest population by age served in the Annex is 41 to 59 years of age. What is probably surprising to you in this slide is that the second highest population served in the Annex is over the age of 60, followed by 25 to 40-year-olds, and then HUD-defined youth homeless of 18 to 24-year-olds. Senior homelessness continues to rise, and we continue to see, and we continue to see the population age, and the need for long-term planning for seniors who are no longer able to survive on the streets becomes more apparent. Additional data elements from the Annex Center include the average length of stay, which is about 50 days, the number of PBSO drop-offs averaging 3.5 a month, the number of calls made from the Annex to PBSO for incidents is 17 over a nine-month period, and the number of EMS calls has been 32, or an average of 3.6 per month. Calls for medical services range everywhere from heart issues to diabetes to overdoses. Of the 32 calls, an average of 1.8 per month are hospitalized through either EMS transport Approximately 100 persons were placed into the Annex over a period of eight weeks. The remaining homeless in John Prince Park were diverted to family and friends, entered into treatment, entered into rapid rehousing or permanent supportive housing, or relocated to another area of the county. Several persons within the Annex suffered from addiction, and as a result, chose to return to the streets instead of entering into a treatment or detox facility, not uncommon with large encampments. Some residents were exited by the operator for multiple rule violations, including loitering, panhandling, bringing drugs onto campus, et cetera. The Annex Center was the first of its kind in Palm Beach County, was one of the first of its kind in Palm Beach County, and it was erected quickly to prevent the COVID spread in the park and the surrounding communities. Looking back, I would have done things a little differently, as I'm sure we all would have, as they say, hindsight is 2020. But at the end of the day, the pandemic did not run through the homeless population, and this was a direct result of the shift in actions from the county and its partners. Moving forward in an effort to curb the presence of fentanyl in the surrounding communities and in other shelters, Rebel Recovery will be engaged to provide two peer specialists at the Annex Center to assist with addiction issues that are presenting with some guests. Transportation away from the Annex Center has been an important tool, as it prohibits persons from being discharged and transitioning into neighboring communities and wooded areas. The acuity and chronicity lists are now in play and at use at all Palm Beach County shelters. The HRC-2 in Lake Worth is well underway and should be completed by the first quarter of 2023. We will continue to monitor the facility on a monthly basis to ensure that cohesive services are occurring with all partners involved. Thank you, and if I can answer any questions? I'd be happy to do that.
I'm sure we'll have some questions, but I do believe there's some public comment that we can get through as well, for full context.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Ms. Blair English.
Ms. English, you're recognized for three minutes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Blair English. I represent the Belatera community, both as leading their committee that we formed to deal with the issue, as well as I serve on the county's Neighborhood Advisory Board. Belatera is about a half mile down the street from the temporary homeless shelter, and I want to give you a resident's perspective of what life has been like for us over the last nine months. As you know, the shelter opened in July, became close to COVID capacity in August. The period from August through early December was a really rough stretch for us. Prior to the shelter opening, I'd say the homeless incidents were pretty rare. For that stretch of time, we saw a rapid and sustained increase in incidents. What I mean by incidents are mostly loitering, panhandling, and littering. There were some other things too, but the majority is what the things I just listed. We were thankful for the formation of the Neighborhood Oversight Board. What we were able to do is work with planners, shelter managers, PBSO, to try to develop some strategies on how to reduce the problems we were seeing, and that started to take an effect. I'd say things started to get better in about mid-October, but what actually happened was things were being cleaned up along 441, but they were pushed over to Weisman Way. So for the remainder of the year, the problems actually continued along Weisman Way and actually continued to deteriorate to the point where we started seeing multiple campsites pop up back off the road underneath the trees and behind the trees, where we had impromptu furniture, stools, large piles of garbage start to collect. After our last meeting of the year, which was pretty productive, again, shelter managers adjusted their policies and procedures. PBSO took a bit more of an active role, and I'm happy to tell you that from January onwards, things have got dramatically better. They're not the same as what they were prior to the shelter opening, but what I would say for the majority of residents is that it's at a tolerable level, if and only if the shelter remains temporary. So if you remember, for those of you that were on the board when, at the initial vote, we had a large number of residents that showed up and spoke out against this, being as we're just a half mile down the road. Many of us that spoke did so having had firsthand experience with the problems of homelessness, so we knew what we were talking about. We listed a long list of things that we were afraid were going to happen. Thankfully, the worst of our fears didn't come to fruition, and I think that's directly responsible to everybody on the board's help. But many of those issues did happen, and they happened for a sustained period of time. So in that respect, we were right as residents, and you were wrong. We'd like to give you three recommendations from the residents to the board. One, please continue the current efforts you're making to reduce the problems while the shelter is in place. Number two, whenever that final facility is built, please move everybody into it and close your shelter, keep it temporary. And three, for all incidences such as this or any other zoning issues that are going to significantly impact residents in a local area, we respectfully request that you actually sincerely listen to the residents, consider their concerns seriously, before you make a final decision on a vote. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions or...
Very good, and we do have one question for now, and I'll just say thank you for your candor, both good and bad. We've made commitments to you and your neighborhood and surrounding communities. We certainly intend to honor them, but we appreciate the honest and candid way that you've provided perspective on how you've lived through this and how it's affected your life. Commissioner McKinley?
Thank you. Mr. English, thanks for being here today, and thank you for being so diligent in raising your concerns so that we could address those with staff and with the good men and women over at the Palm Beach Sheriff's Office. This was not a decision that I was entirely comfortable with, recognizing that we basically moved a problem from one county commission district into another county commission district. And I hope you will recognize that our choices were extremely limited at the time that we had to make that. The facilities that we had available were basically nonexistent, except for this one temporary option, and I assure you, I am a little frustrated that the construction deadline has been pushed out from the last quarter of 2022 to the first quarter of 2023, and we'll do everything in my power to make sure it's not extended beyond that, and I believe I have the commitment of the county administrator to expedite that process as much as possible. But we brought this, while we approved this temporary location, this update was part of that motion, so that the new Commissioners could be aware of what happened and where we are today, but also so we could continue to say on the record that the second shelter, the permanent location, is on track to be constructed. The delay had a lot to do with that neighborhood filing a lawsuit, and then they tried to appeal that, and we had to wait until that settled out, so that's caused some delays in the construction. But this is probably, as staff told me yesterday in my review, and as you and I both know, the most difficult homeless population to address because they were the most reluctant to seek services, and COVID and that pandemic and the risk of spreading that this virus was mostly responsible for taking this quick action, and it really forced our hand to address this population. But we struggle. This is your chronic homeless population that we're dealing with, and the fact that we have so many that are in that shelter that are willing to get services is a success, and your continued involvement and your comments and your wishes to see additional services provided to this population will save someone's life. So while it's frustrating in one sense, you should be very proud of the work that you're doing to make sure that those that are willing to seek help are getting the help that they need, and please, every time you email me, every time you raise a concern, it is shared with staff, and I encourage you to continue to do that. So thank you for being here today.
Very well said, Commissioner McKinley. I don't see any other questions from members of the board for you, sir, so thank you for your public comment. Is there any further public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to take a point of personal privilege to invite, Ms. Baker, you're recognized. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege to invite the members of PBSO that are here with us today that are involved in the Lewis Center and the homeless outreach team to the microphone for just a moment. Deputy Jim Mackey, if you could do some introductions for us. I've been honored to form a relationship, a personal relationship, with Mr. Mackey, Deputy Mackey, over the last two years, and his commitment and his genuine passion for this population, day and night. He's lived with them for three years. The stories that he has are amazing, the outreach and the assistance that he's provided personally is amazing, and I just wanted to take a moment to give the three of you the floor to make any comments, recommendations, perspectives, but to also thank you for what you all do for both the Board of County Commissioners, our community, and the homeless population in particular. Sir?
Thank you, and thank you all of you for what you've done for us. This is my partner, Adrian Maldonado, my supervisor, Brian Cullen. We also have a whole other team that's out in the field right now, and they've been a big part of it. There has been growing pains with the Annex. We've tried to work day and night to try to help out the cities, as well as the county, and make it a success. There were bumps in the road. The growth of the county, the pandemic have added some hurdles, which is needless to say, to tell you guys. Other than that, I can say for the team and I that we're honored to have a partnership with Palm Beach County Coalition. We're looking forward to a longstanding relationship with them. As a team, we'll be able to change lives.
Very good, and you and I always stay in touch on at least a weekly basis, I think, and I appreciate the insight and candor you have given me as a colleague of yours. Deputy Maldonado or Sergeant Cullen have any comments you wanted to make? Well, I just wanted to take, Sergeant, you're recognized, sir.
Let me just say this, sir. I just can't say enough for my team. You know, they have taken this from the beginning in August, when this all took place with the Annex, and they have just taken such a great role in it, and it's just my pleasure to work with them and lead them, so I just wanted to thank them publicly.
And it's on that point that I wanted to take, again, a point of personal privilege. When we started this process, we were threatened by lawyers under Pottinger, making reference to how the Miami, the City of Miami Police Department treated their homeless population, I'm sure decades ago, or at least a decade ago, in contrast with how Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office under the leadership of Sheriff Bradshaw works as a team, as part of the community, in a proactive, compassionate, and effective way. That defines the law enforcement in Palm Beach County. You're not without criticism, and you're not without a brighter future, and always a need to make the profession more professional and adapt to the times. But there's a huge contrast between what we've seen in the past in law enforcement and what we see in this county through your service as deputies and supervisors and the law enforcement agency as a whole. It's something to be very proud of as a community, and we deeply thank you for what you do for our homeless population, gentlemen.
If you can't tell, we're smiling.
Very good. Thank you. Back to Wendy, or the Administrator.
I also wanted to thank the Sheriff's Office for all of their assistance, because whenever we call on them, they come to the table with us with solutions, and they have been hands-on with our homeless population even before we moved to the Lewis Center Annex. They have been our partners in our community revitalization area, and we look forward to continuing to work with you as our partners. Thank this board for your patience and also your leadership and guidance in allowing us to move in a rapid pace to move our homeless from John Prince Park over to the Annex. But I cannot say thank you enough to the staff, because they worked night and day to get this done. FDO, along with Isame and Audrey Wolf, when she was here, she personally picked out, as you look at the picture, the shower curtains, the rugs, et cetera, because she wanted to make this a warm place for our homeless population. But Wendy, in community service, thank you. You guys have been outstanding in helping our homeless and getting them into locations. And Eric, thank you for definitely working with our communities when it comes to educating them, listening to their issues, and then making everybody coordinate so that we can address. Mr. Blair, we'll always listen to what the community has to say, even if we don't. Commissioner McKinley will ensure that we do, but I have to tell you that it is our responsibility to listen to what our residents say and then resolve the issue. Every challenge that comes to us, there is no playbook for any of it, and so we do listen to you. We listen to the professionals, and we make the appropriate adjustments. We will continue to make the adjustments. We live and learn, and as we complete HR2, permanent facility, some of the lessons we have learned, we will implement those, so we don't have to repeat those same mistakes. So we'll continue to move forward, work with our partners, ensure that all of our residents are protected, and we continue to help our residents that are less fortunate. And to James, thank you for your leadership, and Nancy, it was the pandemic, and I'm telling you, this staff, all of our staff, but especially this staff, not only standing up the Annex area, but they also stood up during this pandemic, our Western Resource Center. And so I... they also stood up during this pandemic our Western Resource Center. And so, again, I wanted to publicly say how hard they've worked, and they've done an outstanding job for our homeless population. Thank you.
Very well said, Ms. Administrator. And I would like to just make one comment to echo those thoughts, but to also thank Commissioner McKinley, who certainly could have either stopped this altogether or stood in the way in terms of delaying it. But like the rest of the board, we take our title as county commissioner very seriously in that we look at our issues as a community as a whole, and we don't get lost in the boundaries of our particular districts. We try to do what is overall best for the county. She's made commitments to her district. We've honored those commitments and will continue to do so. But I just want to thank her as a great teammate for allowing this process to move so smoothly. Did you have any comments, ma'am? All right. Well, is there a motion to receive and file?
It's moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McKinley, second by Vice Mayor Weinroth. All in favor, all opposed. See if it can file. Five E one passes unanimously. We're on now five F one. Thank you again for everything. Gentlemen, be safe out there. Five F one, Water Utilities.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move for the approval on preliminary reading and to advertise for public hearing on April 20th, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. This ordinance, F one.
Vice Mayor Weinroth has moved five F one for passage. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Weiss. All in favor, all opposed. That item passes seven zero. We will have this issue back for final adoption, and maybe we'll get a little bit deeper into it then. We're on to board appointments, six A.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make one comment about this rate study.
Yes, ma'am. You're recognized.
If we can make sure that this PowerPoint presentation that you've prepared and this summary gets into the hands of some of our business community leaders for them to review prior to our public hearing, I would appreciate that.
We can. We will do that, and we have had several meetings already with our business community and additional outreach. And we'll share this with them as well, send this over to them, and see if there's some additional follow-up conversations that we can have with them. So happy to do some additional outreach between now and two weeks at the next public hearing meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. We're on agenda items, six A, Commission District Appointments. We'll start with District Seven. So just to give Commissioner Moreno a heads up, we're going to be working our way north to you. So you might want to get that mute button ready if you have any Commission District Appointments. District Seven, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to appoint, I'd like to make two appointments, appointing Sherri Albury to the Library Advisory Board and Chrishe Mixon to the Housing Finance Authority.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bernard, second by Vice Mayor Weinroth. All in favor, all opposed. That passes seven zero. Now to District Six, Commissioner McKinley.
I have no appointments.
No appointments. District Five.
No appointments.
No appointments. District Four, the Vice Mayor.
No appointments.
District Three. I would like to, well, pass the gavel.
Okay, you're recognized, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to appoint Tracy Caruso to the Board of Housing Finance Authority effective immediately. And this is pursuant to the Housing Finance Authority Palm Beach County ordinance two dash one eight four. Requires a vote, a majority vote of the board. Commissioner McKinley? Oh, is that light on from before? Sorry.
I can't second. I have chairing.
Second.
Okay, call the question. All in favor, all opposed, one opposed. Okay, that motion passes.
Was it six one with Commissioner McKinley?
It was six one with McKinley opposed.
Very good. District Two, Commissioner Weiss.
None.
District One, Commissioner Moreno.
I have none, thank you.
Hello? Do you have any District Appointments?
I have none, thank you.
Blink twice for no, or once for yes.
Okay.
No.
I guess I could have said just shake your head. All right, very good. That concludes board appointments. If we could just take a five-minute recess, there's some important business that I'd like to be a part of as we get into staff comments, but I need to take a quick break for about five minutes. So we'll be in recess, and we'll return here at 12:10.
There you go.
The Board of County Commissioners, we'll move to item 7A1. Motion to receive and file with updated board directives by the county administrator. Ma'am, did you have any particular comments that you wanted to make?
This is my monthly update to you on board directives. The board directed staff to amend our paid parental leave policy. That has been completed. We're also working on Singer Island submerged land to review development proposal and pending litigation related to filing of submerged land in Lake Worth Lagoon off Singer Island. Staff has held discussions with representatives of the property as well as initiating an appraisal of the property. Further, on another one, Rivier Beach Marina compliance, we're following through on that particular item as well. We have scheduled the South and West County Government Center's future land change potentially for April 27th workshop. The ATV park has been scheduled for June 22nd workshop. The boards and committees that the board directed us to look into options and bring back to the board. You approved the preliminary reading and permission to advertise for an ordinance that reduces the in-person quorum to 25 percent, which then allows us to work more efficiently in our boards and agencies and gives us a bit more flexibility. So, we anticipate on the 20th this board adopting that ordinance and it's going into effect once it's filed with the state. And gas station emergency power staff has met internally and researched the issue. We will present findings to the Board of County Commissioners at our April meeting for zoning. And then the others are here, so I'll ask that you receive and file my report.
Any questions of the administrator?
Move to receive and file.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth on 7A1 to receive and file an administrator's report. Is there a second? Second, by Commissioner Sacks. No further comment. All in favor, all oppose, that item passes 707B. County Attorney, you recognize, ma'am?
Mayor, I have, believe it or not, I have just two more short items here.
I almost made it.
I do want to inform the board that we went before the three rating agencies to issue some revenue bonds and we received our ratings back. We retain, and I'm just ecstatic, our AAA bond rating for general obligation bonds from all three rating agencies. Further, we received and maintained one AAA rating for non-revenue bonds plus the other two agencies, we retained the AA plus rating. It's unusual for accounting to receive AAA bond rating for non-revenue bonds, but we have achieved that goal and we're retaining that. So, thank you for your support. I believe that it shows our very strong management efforts and our financial systems. And so, I do believe there is a reason why a number of businesses, especially corporate headquarters, are moving to our county is because they feel that we are managed very well here in our county. And so, I want to thank staff and especially this board for us being able to move forward. So, when I'm holding on to those pennies, you know why.
And we know why and we know how incredible you've been at managing debt and the resources of this county in an effective way and we're very thankful for your leadership. Commissioner Bernard, then we'll go to Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say congratulations to, you know, the rating agencies and it just means that, you know, I'm so happy now that we're going to have the AAA rating for the non-GO. So, that means you can work on my housing bond.
We're working on some things.
I'm sure that'll be on another agenda, not today. Commissioner Sacks, you recognized.
Thank you so much. I want to thank our county administrator because that makes it all so much, just puts into focus what Palm Beach County is all about, to bring businesses here. We, you, run a tight ship. Sometimes, I think, a little bit too tight, but that's good because we need leadership like yours and, of course, your staff, it all comes from the top. So, that all of us who want certain things and would like to expand certain expenses, you keep us in shape and that provides a very good, solid financial platform for the future of business in this county. And I want to thank you for that. And I also have some requests. No, actually not, but I appreciate it very, very much. Thank you for your leadership and your fiscal responsibility.
One last thing.
Please.
While I'm smiling because I am just so proud, I'd like to congratulate Denise Marie Niemann on winning the Women's Chamber Giraffe Award in government. It was well deserved, she's earned it, and she has been our leader in legal affairs for 27-plus years.
Well, 25 as the county attorney and 10 before that, just doing stuff.
I was giving you two extra years as our leader as county attorney, but congratulations. I am very proud to work with you on a day-to-day basis and you epitomize a leader and so you definitely deserve the giraffe award.
I have the zebra mask on, I should have worn the other one today. But I appreciate that and not to one-up you, Verdina, but I have, if we can move on to my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Well, on that note, I think that's a great entry point into county attorney comments.
And I don't want to one-up Verdina, but I have two things to brag about her today. I know, this is going to be that girl power kind of thing, supporting each other, but Verdina deserves a round of applause for her Woman on the Move Award from Onyx Magazine. She was one of 18 in the state of Florida to be honored with that award and that's really incredible.
I don't know that she'll have time to accept the award.
I know, right? And then also the Bova Award from the Black Business Investment Corporation was also given to Verdina. So, these are just her most recent accomplishments, so congratulations on that. All right, and I sent a memo to the board following up the individual meetings I had with most of you. It's, I'm getting a little choked up even thinking about, to talk about this, but October 31st, 2021 is my last day and I've had a succession plan in place for a while. And I felt that it was my responsibility, as soon as I went in to drop, to leave the office in a better shape than I found it. It's always been a great place, but we brought it to a level that's very high. It's filled with the next generation that we've all been talking about, where you have it in the county attorney's office. It's the best office that it's ever been and it's quite frankly, the best law firm in the entire county and the state of Florida. I'd go further than that if we were dealing with Florida law there, but I'm really proud of the office that we have and the succession plan was created with that in mind. You have extremely intelligent, creative thinkers who are just really good human beings working there and they're very family-oriented. They've taken huge pay cuts, some of them, to come work in this office for the county because of the message that this board has sent about being a family kind of environment, you care about people as people, and that has trickled out. I've had a law firm call me and ask me, "What are you doing over there? I just lost somebody, what is going on?" And I'm telling them, this day and age, people want to have a quality of life. It doesn't mean they're lazy or they want to kick back in a government job because the county attorney's office is not a government law firm. It is, it can compete with any private firm, I can tell you that. And with that, one of the commissioners asked me when I was making the rounds, "What do you view as the biggest challenge coming up in the county attorney's office?" And I said, "Maintaining what you've got. Retention is going to be a big issue." People like the atmosphere, they love the challenging work, they work very hard, they appreciate the teleworking very much, so thank you publicly on behalf of the entire county attorney's office. You know, you can put family first, but you can also give your job 100 percent as well. So, it's really worked. So, I get a little protective in a maternal way with the office and I joke around with some of you that I'm old enough to be your mothers. Well, I'm definitely old enough to be, you know, the mother to a lot of the people working in the office now and I care very much about what happens to it in the future. The easiest thing for me would be to give my 121-day, 120-day notice, which by the way is July 4th, which is coincidental, it's Freedom Day. Interesting that that's, I did the math earlier and I said July 4th and then just wish everyone a good life and leave, but I just didn't feel like that would be responsible. So, I wanted to make sure everything was, to use a Commissioner Marino term, teed up if you decided to go there. Because one thing's for sure, I've always known from day one, it's the board's ultimate decision. You have a lot of options, I've identified four, and I just wanted to get your direction to see how you would like to proceed with the hope in mind that the, whatever happens does keep the stability of the county attorney's office in mind and, you know, the office morale. And there's just the excellent legal services that's provided to all the county departments, administration, and of course, the board. So, with that, I really would just like to hear what direction you would like me to take and I'm ready to go in any way that you feel is best.
Very good. I think it's an appropriate time for us to have a conversation in the sunshine, in public, on where we intend to go. And I'll kick it off by saying that I want to see the county attorney's office continue in the way that it's operated thus far in my experience, which I think has been very effective. I always say that you don't need to look out, do a national search when we have incredible talent here. I was in early, I bought in early to the option four, which was the two-stage, but ultimately appointed Denise Kaufman as the ultimate county attorney. So, just, what I'm going to do is sort of open up the floor and sort of keep track of where the commission's going. We're not going to have finality today, but we, you know, there'll be other hearings on this to sort of ink the deal, so to speak, but for me, I'm solidly in item four and I would love to hear from my colleagues, starting with Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Thank you, Mayor. And certainly, option four is a great option. It would be the easiest option, I think, from our perspective, but I'd like to ask for a little bit of historical perspective from our county administrator. And certainly, you are someone who's gone through that process when Mr. Weissman retired. Can you tell me a little bit about what the process was as they made the decision for you to assume that role?
The board made the decision to go out. They hired a headhunter. The headhunter contacted certain individuals. I was included and we went through the process. And at the end of the day, I was selected, initial four to three vote, and then another vote took place, so it was unanimous by the board. And that was the process.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, as I say, option four certainly is the easiest one from a perspective of handling this. I think, you know, both our current county attorney and the deputy are certainly very qualified. I'm just wondering whether we don't owe it to our stakeholders to open this up a little bit, to just give ourselves a perspective of what is available out there, whether it would be a formal search or whether just a solicit application and have an opportunity to open this up a little bit, to have some additional comparisons. And so, again, I'm not firmly in, you know, feeling that that is something we must do, but I certainly would open that up as a potential for conversation here on the board here.
All right, so I'm going to put you down temporarily as a one. Very good. Commissioner Bernard, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Denise Niemann, I was probably one of the commissioners that you didn't get a chance to meet with and schedule didn't permit us to meet. And so, you know, I went back and forth on this issue and just thinking about what's the best way. Typically, I would be for option one, to go outside and, you know, hire some, and let's just get everybody to apply for this position. But, you know, I've had the chance to talk to some of the attorneys in the office and, you know, based on recommendations from some of the attorneys in the office, they believe that it is best for us to stick with Denise Kaufman and so I would support option four. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Weiss, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in having an opportunity to sit with Denise and talk about this, I mean, I'm not an attorney, I'm, you know, my background is, was in business and in understanding, I mean, normally I would have, I probably would have fallen into the camp too of wanting to do a nationwide search, but in having a conversation and really understanding that working in, working in California or working in Florida as a county attorney are really very different. The laws are different and, you know, we, so it really shifted me to think, okay, so now we've really narrowed, it's my mind anyways, it narrowed, you know, how large a search you could do because you'd want somebody who is familiar with you could do because you'd want somebody who is familiar with county, municipal, and state law in the state in which, you know, where we reside and where we're home. And so, that shifted my thinking quite a bit and I, as somebody who is both a recipient of the work of that office and as a resident of Palm Beach County, I feel like the office is doing an excellent job. They're providing the service, they're, you know, they're winning their cases, they are delivering for the people of Palm Beach County, so I'm very comfortable in option number four.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Weiss, for your comments. Are there any other remaining commissioners that would like to weigh in? Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you very much. First, I don't accept your resignation.
That's option five.
I think that's option five, so, but I know that you've been looking forward to this and I just dread the day that you won't be here, so I have your cell number. But having been an attorney for many, many years and having been a government attorney for a number of years with the State Attorney's Office in Miami-Dade, I think that you don't mess with success. You have run a law firm that has won and the most recent case, which occurred with the so-called Ski Lake, you went up, your team went up against some of the best lawyers in the county. I think every one of these commissioners recognizes that if there is a tough legal issue in their, in their district, your team is the one that we want representing the county. So, absolutely, Denise Kaufman is brilliant, she's tough, she's worked with you and you've been a tremendous success. We can't find anybody better than the team that you have put together, so I would, if I have to accept the fact that you're going, you know, c'est la vie. However, let's, let's deal with success and your team is successful. I think that they put fear into other attorneys, we've got some very fine attorneys in this county, but I think we have some of the finest in your office, so let's stay the course. Thank you, Mayor.
Can I put you down in, as an item four or number four? Very good. Commissioner McKinley, you recognize, ma'am?
Thank you. Quick question, Ms. Baker, when were you appointed?
2015.
2015, okay, so I am the only commissioner who went through that process. I came in here today expecting that we would go through that process as well. I think being the county administrator and being the county attorney are two different jobs. And I have reached out to some leaders in the community that have no complaints about the operation of our county attorney's office, so I am leaning towards option number four, Mayor Kerner, for your tally. The process that Ms. Baker went through was brutal, but we were coming out of a county administrator who'd been there also for a very long period of time and I forget which one mentioned it, that you can't really go from litigating cases in California, Oregon, or Montana and try to come to Florida and litigate cases in the Florida court system. It's much different than being an administrator. So, I also would, actually, my number one choice would be option five, but you've left that off the page here, so I guess we have to accept your resignation, but I look forward if the board moves in the direction of appointing Ms. Kaufman. She's got some really big shoes to fill and I know she stepped in temporarily while you were on leave late last year and let's give her a chance.
Very well said, thank you, Commissioner McKinley. And Commissioner Moreno, you recognize, ma'am?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Yes, my voice is about four octaves lower today, but I also met with Denise, thank you very much for taking the time and I, I heard what Bob said about option one. If we were to do anything like that, I would, I would think it would be a statewide search as opposed to a nationwide search because there are certain things that are very unique to Florida. I am comfortable with option four, my only concern would be the length of the contract and I believe it was, I think Denise, you discussed it as five years, would that be correct?
Actually, Commissioner Moreno, we did not get into a discussion about what that term would be, it was the drop period that I was in, I was just wrapping up my fifth year, so I can see where that could have been mixed in, you know, mixed in our discussion, but that hasn't been determined and that's what I would bring back, is something that would have some parameters. We could do that in a different board, you know, we'll obviously do that in the board meeting, but we can do the county attorney designate starting June 1st and then come back within a certain period of time with a contract, with those terms and conditions for you all to decide if, you know, what's acceptable. So if that's okay, we can do it that way, two steps.
Thank you, that'd be fine.
All right, thank you.
And were there any other comments, Commissioner Moreno?
I'm good, thank you.
Very good, it looks like it's the board's intention to designate Denise Kaufman or to appoint Denise Kaufman as the county attorney designate on June 1st, 2021, and then with a ongoing intention to appoint her as the county attorney at the expiration of your term, which will be October of 2021, October 31st?
Yeah, Halloween.
So, I think first and foremost, let's give a round of applause to our county attorney designate. I think it's fair to say that there is some potential for, for change in this vision, but from my perspective, my change won't be, my perspective will not be changing. I intend to execute on this board's direction, which is option four, appointing Denise to the position in two stages, the first as county attorney designate effective June 1st and then as county attorney on November 1st. During this interim period, there will be a need to bring these items back to the board for some level of finality, but for now, we have in a very open and professional way adjudicated a very important issue. There are three officers that report directly to the Board of County Commissioners, that's the county administrator, county attorney, and internal auditor. And everything you guys said was spot-on, so I'm just going to leave it at that. I'm excited to see this process come to finality, I'm not excited to see Denise Neiman leave. I wish that we had an dented servitude when it comes to the county attorney, but we don't, so thank you for doing your due diligence, it's just another feather in your cap to be able to manage a transition process like this without fireworks and at finding the right result, which is Ms. Denise Kaufman, so thank you for your outgoing efforts as well. But we still have you to June 1st as the county attorney and then she'll be the designate and then I'll wait till October, we have you in some form or fashion.
Well, I am still the county attorney until October 31st of 2021, so just, because, and I say that like that because I know where everything stops too, so I know that responsibility doesn't go away, I mean, you've got me through that time. I can't thank you enough for what just happened here, I came in here not having a clue what was going to happen. It was one of the first times ever, I didn't even have a little bit of an idea what the possibilities are, but I've been saying forever with this job, I don't take any day for granted, I don't take a job for granted, I don't take a title for granted, and I know that's how the county attorney's office operates as well, so obviously, whatever you all decided today was going to be just fine, we would make it work, but I'm so grateful that you chose one that is something that's very, it's forward-moving. Only one other county has done this and I know others are watching, as usual, Palm Beach County, what we're doing, so I really appreciate the comments and on behalf of my office, thank you so much. And if you don't mind, I mentioned bringing the item back April 20th, but since we had the benefit of this public discussion, I'll bring it back in May, just before June, so then there's no add-on and no rush with anything, so if that's okay with you.
And, you know, sometimes you don't want to mess with a success, so if you want to make some comments, you're more than welcome to. We would be delighted to hear from you, since we're going to be getting so close to the seven of us and you.
I just want to thank you so much and thank you on behalf of the office. Denise Marie has been fabulous and she has really devoted the last two years to make this happen and she will do everything in her power to make sure that I am well-prepared and that I understand my role to serve you and to serve Palm Beach County. So I want to thank you for your trust and your confidence and I want you to know, I will be there for you the same way that she was there for you and I will do my very best. Thank you.
Thank you, so well said and be careful what you wish for. All right, that was awesome that we were able to work through that. Did you have any other comments, Madam, County Attorney?
No, but it's fun to actually have comments, I think I'm going to start having comments. Now, thank you again for all the, everything that you've said, it went right to my heart and it won't go to my head, but it went right to my heart and I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Well, you're not off the hook, we're going to have, I'm sure, to Denise.
You're never going to be able to get rid of me, ever, so in some fashion, I'll be bugging you with text messages.
You're still working for us, so we, we'll get to your, we're going to, we're going to laud you at length at some point in time, but today was, today was a great conversation and decision. Very good, we'll move now to agenda item eight, commissioner comments, we'll start with, we'll go again in reverse order to give County Commissioner Moreno some time to get her microphone ready, so we'll start with District 7, Commissioner McBurnard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, you know, we did the moment of silence for Congressman Alcee Hastings, you know, he was a beloved congressman and we're going to miss him in Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Thank you for your, for leading the invocation and pledge of allegiance in his honor today. Your words were very, very touching. District 6, Commissioner Melissa McKinley.
Ms. Neiman, it was like when I left Senator Nelson's office and they told me, once you're in the federal family, you're always in the family, it's like the mafia, so you, you'll always be part of the county family. I have a couple of comments and I'll get rid of the business first. I have two requests for off-site proclamations. The first one being declaring April 9th, 2021, is the Lord's Place Sleep-In for Sleep-Out Homelessness Awareness Day in our county. The second one, declaring April 2021 as Second Chance Month in Palm Beach County.
Motion by Commissioner McKinley, second by Vice Mayor Weinroth for two off-site proclamations, all in favor, all opposed, that passes 7-0.
Thank you. We'll miss Congressman Hastings, he was co-chair of the Everglades Caucus and worked so hard with us on all the Everglades restoration issues with Congressman Mario Diaz-Balart. I've said enough today. I have one issue I'd like to give some staff direction. As you know, Mayor, you have allowed me to continue to serve as the board's appointment to the Business Development Board and in that role, I serve on the Executive Committee. Recently, one of our Executive Committee meetings followed up with our Board of Directors meeting, a conversation ensued about taking a look at the incentive programs that the county partners with the Business Development Board. That arose out of a conversation surrounding the recent FinFRAQ project approval at the county and some comments that were made that, yes, we made an exception for this particular project, given its geographical location in the county and the average salary out there. We made that, we waived that requirement because of the area of the county that it was in. There are other pockets of this county, in my opinion, and I believe that this is the expression of the Business Development Board, that would benefit from projects that pay an annual salary of around $40,000 plus benefits. I would like staff to meet with the Business Development Board's leadership and engage in some of those conversations to see if there's a way where very descriptive parts of the county, whether it's down to the census tract or they're in a foreign trade zone, a rural area of opportunity, or in an opportunity zone, where those average salary requirements could be waived because the project would provide a very beneficial, very big benefit to the communities that it's being proposed to be placed in. And so, this is simply direction, formal direction, full transparency for staff to engage in that conversation with the Business Development Board and to bring back their thoughts and recommendations moving forward.
Without objection, or is there objection to the direction? County Administrator, are you in full awareness of your direction? Very good.
And then the last thing, Mayor, this afternoon, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM at Victim Services, their office is over on Australian, just south of 45th Street, they will be hosting their annual Field of Hope event, this is in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. If you have not been to this event, I would encourage you to drop by. They place flags in the ground to remember survivors as well as victims of sexual assault and certainly something everybody should take a look at, so if you have an opportunity to go by, I'd encourage you to do so.
Can you repeat the location and time?
It is the Victim Services Office on Australian, just south of 45th Street, it's on the east side and the same campus is where High Ridge is located.
And that's between 4:00 and 6:00?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for informing of, informing us of that and also thank you for your very diligent service on the Business Development Board. I know that it's a very weighty position with a lot of things for you to consider on behalf of the board and behalf of the county. It's not some advisory board that you, that meets every two months and you've done a heck of a job there, so we're lucky to have you there.
Let me just add one other thing too, they're very happy with the county's participation in that board, they want to continue our good partnership with them, we've seen a lot of good things happen, more things will happen in the future and it also seems that the appointments that have been made by the individual commissioners have developed a really well-rounded.
Awesome.
Board of Directors there.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley, for your comments. District 5, Commissioner Maria Sacks, you recognize, ma'am?
Thank you very much, Mayor. The, I have a request for an off-site proclamation declaring April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Palm Beach County. I also have a request for an off-site proclamation declaring May 2nd to the 8th, 2021, as National Tourism Week in Palm Beach County. And let me just say that as Chair of the Tourist Development Board, this is, this is very important to bring tourists here in Palm Beach County and for them to enjoy our beautiful, beautiful shores and our natural resources. And very sadly, we lost Coach Howard Schnellenberger last couple of days, so I have requests for an off-site proclamation honoring the life of Coach Howard Schnellenberger. And thank you very much, I think it was a very productive meeting and I look forward to working with my colleagues in their future to...
Very well said, we have a motion by Commissioner Sacks, second by Vice Mayor Weinroth for three off-site proclamations, all in favor, all opposed, that item passes 7-0. Did you have any further comments?
It's just, I think we're at the light at the end of the tunnel and I look forward to really moving forward economically and health-wise as we get through this pandemic and on to stage three. Thank you.
Well said, and so you're the chairman of TDC?
I am.
Or chairwoman, that's awesome. You moved up quickly.
I want you to change your mind now.
No, that's incredible, is that by, is it always the county commissioner as the chair or were you selected?
Not knowing the history of...
It's always the Board of...
So it's the county commissioner?
I much enjoy it and I think that it's, it's important as we go into the next phase that we start thinking about what we're going to do as a county post-pandemic.
Absolutely, and you're at the tip of that spear, although, you know, I'm the chairman of the Value Adjustment Board, so there's that. You should come to those meetings.
Like watching paint dry.
Commissioner Bernard, you recognize, sir, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just thought about it, if it's possible, can we, I'm sure the Congressman Hastings' family would request an off-site proclamation with, with your approval, if we can have legislative affair, to draft something for us, so now if we can do that.
Is that a motion made by Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner McKinley, all in favor, all opposed, that passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Public Affairs will handle that, they handle all proclamations.
Commissioner Sacks, did that conclude your comments? Commissioner Sacks, did that conclude your comments?
Yes.
Very good. We're going to now move to Commissioner Greg Weiss, District 2.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to request an off-site proclamation declaring April 2021 as Water Conservation Month in Palm Beach County.
Motion made by Commissioner Weiss and seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth, all in favor, all opposed. That passes 7-0.
And I wanted to have an opportunity to share with, with you all in the public. Recently, you know, I was, I served on a special committee for the National Association of Counties regarding broadband and the availability of broadband. It was a task force and had the honor of serving with Commissioner Burrows from Okeechobee County on this task force, and it was members from throughout, throughout the country, got together and to come up with some proposals and policies, primarily for the federal government, but we also did identify some areas for our states and local governments as well, of things that would help move this country forward and provide broadband access to many more people in, in the country. So the task force met, and we went through a series of meetings, and then we broke up into subcommittees, and we broke up into four groups. One is designated and tasked with developing information regarding preparing for broadband. The second was the barriers of building out broadband infrastructure. The third was specifically tasked with dealing with the digital divide and equity, and the group I served in was primarily involved with how do we future-proof these policies? So what we find is technology, of course, moves a lot faster than government policy, and so how do we sort of build in and bake into it, being prepared for the future? There was a number of areas, and I'm not going to go through them all, but suffice it to say, it even, all four groups came up with some similar recommendations, and that had to do with understanding and documenting what we currently have, having an inventory of the availability. We talked about the state barriers. There's legislation in various states, including our own, that inhibits and doesn't necessarily drive, you know, the type of access that we know we now need in this country, whether it's in rural or urban settings, and how we apply incentives so that the incentives are directed that, to really push the boundaries, if you will, of good policy, so these investments do not end up, you know, being short-term, but rather long-term investments. And then what are back, best practices, that that be shared, and reoccurring funding? So those were a number of the topics. It was presented at the recent NACO Legislative Conference that was done virtually and approved, and will be, they'll be working now to push forward these policies to the federal government, to be included in, in their legislation as they move forward. The big thing I, and I, one of the big thing, takeaways that I had was that we're not alone in this, that there are so many similarities of the issues that we have here, not only in Palm Beach County and Florida, but throughout the United States, and that that was recognized and that there has been consistency of how, you know, how we can address this together, whether you're from a blue state, a red state, it doesn't matter. We're all, we're all finding how we can do a better job, and that, in fact, this really is a utility today. It's no longer, you know, just for certain sects, but everybody needs access to broadband, and they need good access to broadband at, so high-quality access with high-quality speeds, both up and down the chain. So with that, I just, I wanted to share that with you this afternoon and let you know that I, I believe there will be legislation coming forward that are really going to help us and support us, and there's going to be funding behind it as well. Thank you, Mayor.
That was a wonderful update and wonderful aspirational projection as to what should happen and what will happen, so thank you, Commissioner Weiss. Any further comments, sir? Very good. We'll move now to Commissioner, District 1, Commissioner Maria G. Marino.
Thank you. I have one request for an off-site proclamation declaring April 18th through 24th as National Pride Leaders Rights Week in Palm Beach County.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Marino for off-site proclamation and seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. There's no further comment from members of the board, all in favor, all opposed. That passes 7-0. And then you recognized, or further comments, ma'am?
Thank you, and I also just want to make a brief comment. Yes, I'd also like to make a brief comment about the Locksahatchie River. I sit on the Locksahatchie River Management Coordinating Council, and for those of you that don't know, the Locksahatchie River is actually one of only two wild and scenic rivers in the state of Florida, and that it's federally designated, so anything that are, that we can do to help bring funds back for the river, I would greatly appreciate it.
All right. Is there objection or without objection?
That's just a comment for Todd and Ed.
All right. Todd, are you with sufficient clarity, sir? All right. Further comments, ma'am?
I'm done, thank you.
Very good.
Very much.
Very good. Vice Mayor Weinroth, do you recognize any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On your behalf, I'm going to request an off-site certificate of appreciation presented to Laura Corey, South Florida Water Management District Principal Regional Representative.
That motion has been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth and seconded by Commissioner Weiss, all on my behalf, which I appreciate. All in favor, all opposed. That passes 7-0.
Thank you. As Mr. Ballerin alluded to earlier, we have a request from one of my constituents in D-4. The Florence Fuller Child Development Center has submitted a request for community project funding, a CPF, for the fiscal year '22. Lois Frankel, our congressional representative in Florida's District 21, has asked, if possible, or Chief, Chief of Staff, has asked, if possible, to make their request more possible to be approved, that this board would show its support of that. Originally, I was going to ask for resolution, but I think because of the timing, we have to have this done by the 9th. If we could have a letter from this board, this body approving the community project funding, which would be for the expansion to reach, I'm going to read from their application. The Falk Center for Counseling is looking to expand the reach of our services by utilizing our existing telehealth platform, paired with a targeted outreach marketing plan to provide mental health services to no less than 1,000 patients in low-to-middle-income working and minority communities in Palm Beach County. Increased access to low-cost, no-cost mental health services will provide individuals and families with the tools and guidelines, or guidance, I'm sorry, needed to live happy, productive lives. This request for this grant is in the amount of $150,000, and so I'm going to ask if we could have unanimous consent to send a letter on behalf of the board in, in support of this funding request.
Very good. Let me turn to Commissioner McKinley for comments on that issue.
Mayor, I have been asked by Families First of Palm Beach County, Boys and Girls Club of Palm Beach County, and other nonprofit organizations to do similar letters of support. I think we need to tread cautiously in, in supporting one and not supporting others, so I don't know the best mechanism on how to handle all of these different letters of requests that we are getting. I certainly support the Falk Center's request, but I also support the other ones, and I, I don't know how you want to handle this.
Well, I think we have, sorry, Commissioner Bernard, you recognized, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, because we've received different, so many different requests. I think that we should do them on an individual basis, and to, like, only when it rises to the level of bringing it to public, like, through the delegation, that it becomes more of a board issue. I think we can submit letters individually for each project, but then not to have the full board to support one project over another.
I, I think ultimately, it's up to each commissioner whether it's, it's important enough to that commissioner or of significant import to the community to bring it before the board, as the Vice Mayor has done on this particular issue. It doesn't preclude us from supporting any other competing interest with a letter of support if they reach out and liaise with their county commissioner, who brings it through the process. Did you have any other further comments on it, or you're just looking for more direction? Because we kind of brought this up earlier during the legislative affairs part. You know, I don't mind, if I believe in the, in the subject matter, I don't care if there's 10 different entities competing for the same pot, we just support them all.
Well, then would I make a recommendation that we submit to you the letters or the requests that rise to that occasion, and we send one letter? So I can get those to you this afternoon?
Well, I don't, one letter for all the entities? See, I don't know who they are at this point. I know I have a co-equal member of this board asking for a letter under the board's name. It's, it's important enough to him personally to bring it to the board. I would hate to reject any specific request of a particular commissioner to have the blessing of this board and the letterhead that goes with it. Thoughts, Vice Mayor Weinroth?
Well, look, I think that this is a request that goes for the entire county. I mean, the Florence Fuller has been doing work for our healthcare workers and, and our frontline workers to ensure that their children have had the care that they needed during this pandemic, notwithstanding the fact that it happens to be cited in D-4. It's a county-wide program. I think on a, on a regular basis, we have approved requests from other commissioners on, on this kind of request. I certainly could write the letter just for myself. The Chief of Staff of her office felt that it would have greater weight if it was coming from this body, and I would, again, renew my request, and if it's this body's feeling that this should just come from my office, I will send the letter myself.
Well, how we adjudicate that is you put the motion forward, and we'll find out.
I'm moving that we have a letter issued by this body.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add that Congressman Frank, or Congresswoman Frankel's office has reached out to my office with similar requests for those letters of support, and Families First of Palm Beach County provides behavioral and mental health services to the children all across this county, and there's no doubt most of us sitting up here have a Boys and Girls Club in their district, so those are also both two county-wide organizations. I'm just, I, I didn't realize that today was the day we needed to bring this forward to the commission for consideration of a letter of support on behalf of the entire commission. Like I said, I support Mayor Wein, or Vice Mayor Weinroth's request, but there are a lot of other organizations out there, and with an impending deadline that's coming up before we meet again, how would you like to handle the other requests? Because.
Well, why haven't they reached out to us? Or, I mean, what, there's, there's a responsibility on their part to interact with their commissioner and get the board to act on their behalf.
I've sent letters of support to these organizations.
Yeah, on, on your letterhead.
Yes.
I think Vice Mayor Weinroth has determined that this is important enough to him that he would like to have the board's blessing on it, and I don't know any other way to adjudicate this issue than to just put it in the motion form. Ms. Baker, let me recognize the county administrator real quick.
I think you gave us some direction earlier. I believe that if we can receive the input from all of the commissioners, we could put together a, a letter that could be sent from this board. I do believe we need to look at who is requesting it, if it is a mission of this, of this board, that we support it. And we support a lot of educational programs, we support a lot of our, our, our partners within the community, and if it meets certain criteria and carries forward, again, the mission of this board, then we put it together and we make sure that the board is aware of it. So if any of you have any further, if it is the board's desire to send letters of support from the board, then that is what I'm recommending. I do personally like the idea that the individual commissioners in their district write their letter of support, because at some point, we're going to get cross when only one entity can receive the funding, and so that's an issue we would need to bring back to the board. But if it's not, and we're just submitting recommendations, then we can do that, and we can come up with a criteria to move it forward.
Okay, so what does that mean for Vice Mayor Weinroth?
This board can direct us to send the letter in support of Florence Fuller, but if there are others that fall within this category, if you can get those names to us as soon as possible, and it is the direction of this board to add them to that list, we can do one letter with all those entities included and send it on if the maker of the motion is inclined to do so.
All right. Well, let me then now turn to Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner Marino. Commissioner Marino, you recognized.
Thank you. I think we should take it up individually with each, each organization as opposed to just putting everybody together in one letter.
Very good. Commissioner McKinley. Sorry, your light was on. So again, coming back to the independence of each county commissioner, you always have an option of bringing things to this board and putting it in the form of a motion if it's within our jurisdiction, and the Vice Mayor has done that. If you're open to amending your motion, to getting approval for it today if it passes, and then adding in other ones, is that what your suggestion was? That's up to you.
I would prefer to see sing, single letters for each individual entity. I mean, I have no objection to embracing Commissioner McKinley's, you know, organizations and any other commissioner up here, but I think, just for clarity, I think those letters should be done separately.
So your motion is a motion on behalf of the board, or a motion to issue a letter on behalf of the board?
For Florence Fuller or, and other organizations, as may be offered by these commissioners over the next couple of days, April 9th being, I guess, the cutoff date for this.
Is there a second? Commissioner McKinley has seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion passes 7-0. Well, we worked our way through that difficult one. Commissioner McKinley, you recognized.
With that in mind, I'd like to request a letter on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club of Palm Beach County for their Career Bound Program, which is, services this county county-wide.
Second. Second.
Motion by Commissioner McKinley, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth for a board letter of support for the Boys and Girls Club. All in favor, all opposed. That passes 7-0. Commissioner Weiss, you recognized.
I wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, and I'd also like to request a letter of support for Families First of Palm Beach County for their request, for their rural health outreach that will provide mental health services and HIV prevention services in the Glades.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McKinley, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. All in favor, all opposed. That item passes 7-0.
Thank you. Those are the only two requests I've received so far.
Thank you. Very good. Commissioner Weiss, you recognized, sir?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to request a letter on behalf of Palm Beach County's Meals on Wheels and Alpert Jewish Family Services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Weiss for letters of support, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. All in favor, all opposed. That item passes 7-0. Commissioner Sacks, you recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to request a letter of support for the Jewish Association for Residential Care, JARC, as well as for the Weisman Center on Atlantic Avenue.
Motion by Commissioner Sacks for two letters of support from the board, and seconded by Commissioner Weiss. All in favor, all opposed. That passes 7-0. Very good. We're back to Vice Mayor Weinroth in comments.
I seem to have opened up a can of worms here, I'm sorry.
But it's now closed for today, so that's good.
Okay, and I, again, would like to congratulate our designated city attorney. Congratulations, and I don't want anything I said with respect to the search to have been anything to do with the incumbent, but just my idea of, of expanding it, and I think this board has certainly demonstrated its confidence and its pleasure with you stepping into that new role, so congratulations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So. Um, so, uh, I guess, can someone offer a motion on my behalf for Lord's Place letter?
Some of.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Weiss for a letter of support of Lord's Place. All in favor, all opposed, that passes seven to zero. Um, I have some, just one very quick comment. Uh, I wanna thank Dave Bernhardt, um, of my office, former career law enforcement officer, and also Catherine Sohar and Dan Ackerman White. I can thank them for a million things, but on this particular occasion, I wanna thank particularly Dave Bernhardt for bringing together members of the board and senior administration to join the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office for an incredible day of learning how to safely operate firearms at our 20-mile bend range. We had a range day. Some of the board members were able to attend and some of them were, were deadly accurate. I was very impressed. But, um, regardless of where you stand on weapons, if you're gonna have one, we want you to use it safely and we want you to see what law enforcement has to deal with in dynamic situations. And I think we accomplished both of those. So my, my special thanks to Dave Bernhardt, whose idea it was, who executed on it, and to Sheriff Bradshaw and Colonel O'Rahoe and the entire team. We had a heck of a time. And it was good to see where some of the taxpayer funds go because they deserve the best equipment, 'cause you can see really how difficult it is to have to carry a weapon and how dynamic those tactical situations are. We're gonna find other ways to learn more about law enforcement and, and other issues that are on our radar, but thank you to Dave Bernhardt for his proactivity in that. With that said, that's all I have. A great day in Palm Beach County. We're gonna recess until 2 o'clock for Matters by the Public. Board is in recess.